Just an FYI for everyone, I did hear from
Get the report and call the role and get things rolling.
Hey, roll call. Badrins Lankella.
Here.
Waltz Zar, De Anda Santana. Barbara Harrington McKinney. Carolyn McAndrews.
Here.
Waltz Zar, De Anda Santana.
Here.
Christopher Cahill.
Here.
Grant Foster.
Here.
Keith Furman.
Present.
Margaret Bergamini.
Present.
Randy Udell.
Here.
And Thomas Wilson. That is it.
All right, I'll quickly run through and do this intro script, give us a minute here. Welcome to our virtual meeting, we're going to cover a few basic items before beginning. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. To members and city staff, members, if you are able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. Use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions. Staff, click raise hand when you are asked a question. The chair will do their best to call on committee members in the order in which their hands are raised. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public that have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the board, please send it to the email list in today's agenda. Let's see the chair, the floor, Alder Foster, the floor is yours.
Great, thank you. It looks like Alder Abbas is in the attendees list, if he could be promoted to a panelist. And I noticed we also have interpreter Julio here. I am interpreter Ariana as well. We are not taking public comment on item five, but do we have someone here that's using an interpreter that's here for public comments? Go ahead.
We, we were not told that there was, there were going to be any comments tonight. Probably a member of the staff, Mike, could let you know what is going to be happening tonight.
Great, it looks like Justin's got his hand up, maybe he can fill us in.
Yeah, so we will, we've got an intro slide, which will be interpreted and then we'll direct any Spanish speaking folks to a call in line that allows them to listen along to the meeting the rest of the way, so. We've got, yeah, well, we've got that slide at the beginning of our presentation with that phone number for people to access.
Okay, should we do that now, or?
We, we'd only received requests for, for the network redesign agenda items, so we had not planned to do it for the entire agenda.
Tom Lynch, you got your hand up?
Yes, I believe unless the agenda changed on Friday, we have public comments on items that are not on the agenda. And then perhaps do we have recruit, recusals?
Yeah, there's a few, I'm just trying to understand if we should, are supposed to be interpreting everything that's going on right now, or I didn't want to No, my understanding is that we are only interpreting the agenda item for the network redesign, so we can proceed with the other items.
Okay, we'll get there then and then we'll ask for some interpretation. So before we get further than, let's get an approval of the minutes of May 16th and May 31st.
Move approval?
Approval then move by Alder Furman, Badri, is that a second? Then seconded by Badri, any discussion? Tom Lynch, your hand is still up, did you want to just hear anything else, or still?
I will lower. Let me find it.
No worries, so yeah, any, any issues or discussion on the minutes for either May 16th or May 31st? Margaret, go ahead.
Yeah, briefly, I appreciate the work of the city staff that take minutes and I know there's always a debate about the substance of the minutes, to what extent the substance of the need of discussion should be reflected in the minutes. When there's, as a committee member, I find that when we have a public hearing, it is extremely helpful if there can be at least a list of the people who spoke at the meeting and a very brief interpretation of what they, or a summary of what they said. I do know this is, I'm not going to vote against the minutes. But I do think that this is something that the committee will want to, should discuss in the future, for future meetings and do it along with staff, see what they are comfortable with and where the city is at with that as a matter of Robert's rules and whatnot.
Sounds good, thanks for the comment, we can take that back to the city attorney's office and review their, their guidance around level of detail, specifically around what information should be captured for a public hearing. If I don't see any other discussion on that, I will assume unanimous approval of the minutes, without objection. Those are approved. And are there any, is there any public comment, Friday was not on the agenda tonight? Not seeing anything, Jesse.
I'm waiting on the reload, sorry. Nope, nope, we we have none.
Okay, very good. Which brings us to disclosures and recusals, are there any disclosures or recusals from members of the body on any items on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, that will bring us to item five, which is adopting the Metro Network Redesign Plan. As noted on the agenda, and as I mentioned previously, we had a public hearing at our last meeting, so tonight's will not be accepting additional public comment on that item, but it will be for questions and deliberation by board and elders that are present, so I will turn this over to which staff member?
I think I, Mike Chigbo and Justin will give a brief, actually, I'm not going to say brief, a presentation that retains information for what you'll be deliberating tonight. So this is Transit Network Redesign, Final Network Plan, Transportation Plan, Policy and Planning Board, June 6, 2022.
And just for our translator, folks, we, we do want to translate this piece until we go to the phone line slide.
If you would like to listen to this meeting in Spanish, please call 617-829-6531.
Si prefiere escuchar esta reunión en español, puede hacerlo llamando al teléfono al 617 829 6531. Lo pueden ver en pantalla, lo repito, 617 829 6531. Al entrar, al entrar en el teléfono, por favor, anuncie su nombre para saber que está en la reunión.
We will wait about one minute for those wishing to listen in Spanish to connect.
Vamos a esperar ahora un minuto para que las personas que quieran escuchar esta reunión sobre el rediseño de la red de transporte se puedan unir al salón de interpretación en español. Así que pueden, cualquiera que prefiera escucharlo en español puede unirse a través del 617 829 6531.
And just for clarification, the remainder of this Zoom meeting will not be consecutive? Interpretation would be, the remainder will only be on the call in line.
El resto de la reunión aquí en Zoom no habrá interpretación consecutiva, será únicamente la reunión en inglés, pero daremos recordatorios para la gente que se pueda unir tarde, para recordarles el número de teléfono para que se incorporen a la interpretación en español si así lo desean.
Twenty more seconds, and then we'll begin. Okay, let's begin. In 1998, Metro implemented the current transit network using transfer points. What that changed did is it allowed more coverage, allowed us to reach portions of our city that were further out. But it did result in longer travel times and it required more transfers. Particularly for riders living outside of a transfer point. Over time, different groups have had different experiences with this network. For example, on the onboard survey in 2015, with our current transit system, African Americans transfer three times more frequently than white riders. Low income, almost twice as frequent. As far as on time performance, transfers don't affect everyone equally. On time performance causes some riders to miss their transfers, for example. Wait, Mike, go back. For example, if one bus due to congestion makes it, is three minutes late at a transfer point, the delay to that person's trip is not three minutes, but they often can miss their transfer, which means that they have to wait for a full three minutes before they can catch their bus for the remainder of their trip. Next slide. On that same onboard survey, African Americans experience trips longer than 45 minutes, almost three times more frequently than white riders. Low income riders also experience trips longer than regular mid or high income riders. This graphic also highlights some of the characteristics of our pre pandemic system. You can see that there is, these represent the service. A number of buses in service during different parts of the day. And you can see that if, if you have a traditional job, where you go to work at seven or eight in the morning and come back at four or five in the afternoon, there are high transit service levels. But if you have a non-traditional job, that starts in the middle of the day, or in the evening, or on weekends, your transit service is not as good. Similarly, if you're dependent on transfer, for instance, for services, like buying groceries on the weekend, you don't experience the same service levels that commuters do, you know, that have traditional jobs. So this disparity in transfer rates and trip times, and then also the availability of of transit service through the day and the weekends is one of the reasons that the Transit Network Redesign Study was initiated and put into the budget. Mike, you can go on.
Thank you, Tom. We're just going to hit this slide every once in a while in case people are joining us late. Again, if you'd like to listen to this meeting in Spanish, please call 617-829-6531.
Simplemente por si alguien se ha incorporado a la reunión tarde, si quieren escuchar la reunión en español, pueden hacerlo llamando al teléfono 617 829 6531. Lo pueden ver en su pantalla.
Okay, so why are we doing the Transit Network Redesign now? There are a couple reasons to address longstanding issues and discrepancies as Tom has laid out. Secondly, as we recover from COVID-19, we'd like to recover in a way that reflects future needs. And finally, we have a separate project, Bus Rapid Transit. We'd like to have a transit network that complements BRT and also bring some of those benefits to more neighborhoods. This project has been going on for almost two years. In phase one, we explored existing conditions and choices regarding transit service. In phase two, we looked at alternatives, primarily the coverage and ridership alternatives. In phase three, we came up with a draft plan. And we're now in phase four, which converts the draft plan into a final plan. This is the draft plan, so just to remind you, we have the, the red lines are routes that run every 15 minutes and the blue lines run every 30 minutes. And then the amendments to the draft plan, which are shown here, make changes to that draft network to make it the, the final network. These amendments were shown at the May 16th Transportation Policy and Planning Board, as well as a May 19th public meeting. And they were shown again at the public hearing held on May 31st. There are a couple new amendments since then, that were not shown but have been requested or, or otherwise added to our amendment list. I'll go through these in more detail, but there's 4E on the, in South Madison, revision to amendment 10 on the near west side. A new amendment 16C on the south side. And new amendments 18A and 18B on East Madison. Okay, if you'd like to listen to this meeting in Spanish, please call 617-829-6531.
Si se ha incorporado ahora la reunión y desea escuchar esta reunión en español, lo puede hacer a través del número de teléfono 617 829 6531.
So I now need to switch to a different PowerPoint so that I can go through those amendments briefly one more time. Margaret, go ahead.
Just a quick request of Mike, if you could, if you're bringing up brand new amendments, ones that we didn't go over in previous meetings this month, if you could perhaps indicate where the, what the impetus was for those, or impetus is for those revisions. Either who brought it up or what needs those amendments are designed to meet, that would be appreciated.
You bet, I'll pause on those. Alder Figueroa, cool, you have a question?
Yes, I just have a quick comment. The interpretation is going well, but when you guys are doing the transition, it takes a bit for that to be seen on the screen, so the interpreter is getting, it's quite a lag. So if you can slow down, you know, like pause extra when you transition from the slides, I think it will work better. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, I can try to do that. And Alder Paulson?
Thanks, just kind of a follow up question or comment or process question to, to Margaret's question there. I was one of the requesters of one of the amendments and I'm happy to speak about it at the appropriate time in the, in the meeting, and so however you're, however you're planning on doing this, if, if we're discussing it as, as we come up to them, or if you want to hold that discussion, hold comments for me until we are into discussion after the slideshow. I'm fine however, I just would appreciate some direction on when, when and if it's appropriate for me to speak about them.
That sounds great, we'll, we'll let staff kind of tee things up, ideally, let's try and hold further discussion until we get through everything, but if there's a need for some clarification, early on, we can turn to you as well. All right, Mike, go ahead. Okay, thanks, I'm going to go through these briefly. Again, the draft plan map. Amendment number one, changes Route B from a two-way service on Troy and School to a one-way loop on Northport and Troy. And somebody can let me know if I'm going too fast or too slow, just let me know. Amendment number two, which staff no longer recommend, re-changes Route D2 from going to the airport to going north of Northport toward Wheeler and introduces new Route S. Amendment 3C undoes the first street crossover. So Route C stays on the south side of the Ismus and Route D stays on the north side of the Ismus. We have several alternatives for amendment number four. This is 4B, all of the amendment fours introduce a new Route O on the south side. Amendment 4B is a one-way loop via Olin, Rusk and Brom Street. Amendment 4C is slightly different, it goes both directions on Olin Avenue to the Alliance Energy Center. Amendment 4D is a one-way loop via Olin, Badger and Fish Hatchery. And 4E, I'll pause on this, this is a new one. This essentially combines 4B and 4D, it's a longer one-way loop using Olin, Rusk, Brom, Fisher Street, Badger and Fish Hatchery. Margaret?
Yeah, if you could say on these amendment four versions, where you intend to have the turnaround point on, we had had some discussion on the Route O and whether it would go up Randall or go up Mills and how it would get back down to the loop. So it's not clear on the map, it's kind of cut off, if you could explain that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, of course. So we investigated several options for the north end of Route O, we had looked at West Washington Avenue. We looked at Mills Street, and we had looked at Randall. We are recommending that the route use Randall Avenue to go into town, there are a couple of reasons for that, it serves Henry Vilas Zoo. And it's also more equidistant between Monroe Street and Park Street. So if you look at Mills Street, Mills is only two blocks away from Park, so it's fairly duplicative of that service. So that's why we're recommending Randall. There is a change to the traffic signal at Randall and Vilas that would be needed to make that happen. If that does not prove to be feasible, then our backup would be Mills Street, so that's why you're seeing Mills as a dotted line here. As far as how this route will turn around and come back, that is a little bit unclear at this point. We'd like to extend it, at least get it up into the UW campus in one way or another, there are several ways that it could turn around and come back. We're also looking at options of connecting it with some other west side route. So, so some, some different options, right now, we're kind of vaguely showing that as just Right now, we're kind of vaguely showing that as just a circle near Charter and University. Okay, amendment number five. This upgrades Route X from a peak period only route to an all day route running hourly outside of peak periods. Peak periods being that 7 to 9 a.m. and 4 to 6 p.m. weekdays time period. So with amendment five, it would run hourly all day other than those times and on weekends. Amendment 6A shortens Route H so that Route H ends at West Town Mall and then introduces new Route R, which would run hourly all day, every day. It would be an extension of the BRT system. So once an hour, you would have a Route R that goes out to the west side on Old Sock Road and then down High Point. And then it also upgrades Route Y to an all day route, again, from a peak period only route to an all day route. Amendment number seven changes Route D2. Instead of using Midvale, it would use Nakoma Road. Amendment eight introduces two new peak only routes. Again, these routes would only operate on weekend, sorry, only on weekdays and only in the commute periods, roughly 7 to 9 a.m. and 4 to 6 p.m. Routes V and W would serve Jennifer Street and Johnson Gorm Street going into the University of Wisconsin. Amendment nine introduces new Route L, which is highlighted in yellow here. It operates from North Madison to Southeast Madison. It serves Wheeler Road. It also serves Dryden Terrace. It serves Sherman Avenue, the Pick and Save on Aberg. It also serves Kinsman, Milwaukee Street, Manona Drive, and then connects La Follette High School with the Owl Creek neighborhood. Amendment 10 makes some changes to Route E in the near west side. It's reliant on amendment five being included. So it moves Route E from Midvale to Seago. And it no longer serves UW Hospital. I'm going to pause here because there's one change or clarification that we recently made. We're showing Route E using Ridge Street. Ridge Street is unimproved. It does not have curb or sidewalks. And so we're clarifying that we would continue to use Franklin, which is this next street over here, until Ridge Street becomes improved with with curbs and better pavement. Chris, a question?
Yeah, I think maybe now while we're on this, is that the recommendation that we heard from a registrar last time? Do you recall?
We've had a few comments. Okay, we yeah, we've had a few comments. Amendment 11A moves Route D2 from McKee Road to Fitchrona and Nesbit and Maple Grove. 11B is a slight variation on that. It moves Route D2 from part of McKee to Manchester and Maple Grove. And amendment 12 shifts Route F from the east branch of Excelsior Drive to the west branch of Excelsior Drive in order to serve the DMV. Amendment 13 shifts the Route D2 from part of Allied Drive to Red Arrow Trail and Geneween. Amendment 14 extends Route B from the planned terminal at Catas Bend to the Fitchburg Civic Campus near Lacy Road. Amendment 15 shifts Route Z from the Capitol Square, as highlighted in yellow, to the UW Campus. Amendment 16A would add a small loop on Route G at Rimrock, Latitude 43 and Novation. Margaret?
Yes, that loop remind remind us, does that require the continuation or the construction of a street or are you starting? Is that piece of Latitude 43 already paved and ready to go?
This one's ready to go. The next one requires the connection.
Thank you.
16B requires that connection of between Latitude 43 and Deer Valley. So this is a larger loop added to Route G using Badger, Pheasant Ridge, Deer Valley, Latitude 43 and Novation. And if with this amendment, we would use a temporary detour using Ski Lane until that's completed. 16C, I will pause on this one. This is a new one that has been added. 16C would use that complete loop as shown on the previous slide. That would simply be the route that's chosen. I'm going to pause and explain this a little bit more. So staff had presented amendments 16A and 16B to the Fitchburg Committees and the Fitchburg City Council introduced and adopted this this one amendment 16C. And so since then, we've removed our staff recommendation for the other two. 17A introduces a new, a small loop to Radicchio Drive just east of County Road MM to Route Z. Margaret?
Yeah, could you, since we were trying to sort of avoid little loops like that as part of the redesign, could you explain why that little loop is called for?
This was a recommendation from City of Fitchburg staff. The basic problem is that Highway MM and Lacy Road is not a fully finished intersection with sidewalks and crosswalks and and so forth. So it would be difficult for us to set up a bus stop at that intersection. And so the goal would be to just put a little loop in there. That's a new new development neighborhood. And so, you know, the goal would be to give them access to the service since that intersection is not completed yet.
Do we have any estimates on when that will be completed in such a fashion that we could set up bus stop more in line with the City of Madison staff recommendation?
No, I don't have that information. Sorry about that. 17B is another change to Route Z. Instead of going straight up and down on Rimrock, it would instead deviate towards Ski Lane, Pheasant Ridge and Badger. And just a note on all of these, there's text on these amendments that indicates which ones were supported by the City of Fitchburg. And finally, amendment 18A, this is a new potential route on the east side Route M. It starts in the Madison College area, comes down Stoughton Road towards Walmart and then down Swanton. This is Meadowlark, sorry for the lack of the street name there, and Cottage Grove, and then it would end at Cottage Grove and Atwood. Meadowlark, again, is the street name there. 18B is a slight variation on that. 18B is a one way loop that comes down towards the Walmart, down Swanton, down Meadowlark, west on Cottage Grove, north on Atwood, north on Fair Oaks, and then back towards Madison College. Okay, then we have a handful of cost savings amendments that that could in theory be used to offset some of the costs of of those amendments. 30A reduces the service levels on the BRT routes A and B. In the draft plan, they are every 15 minutes between 7 a.m. and 7 p.m. on both Saturdays and Sundays. With amendment 30A, that frequent service on Sunday would be removed and it would run every 30 minutes all day on Sundays. 30B eliminates all of the frequent service on weekends for the BRT system. So it would run every 30 minutes on Saturdays and Sundays. 30C is somewhere in between. We would have frequent service on Saturdays only between about 9 a.m. and 5 p.m. So a shorter span of that frequent service. 31, amendment 31 has the shift between midday and evening frequencies happening at 7 p.m. rather than 8. So the the shift to nighttime service would happen one hour earlier. Finally, we have table one that summarizes all of the amendments that come with a staff recommendation, their costs, their their overall costs, and then the cost to Madison and then the costs to others such as our partners Middleton or Fitchburg. Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say that each one of these amendments is a result of the engagement and interaction of Justin, Mike and Sean with residents, community leaders and elders. I think that the amendments make the network better due to that engagement and also want to thank the elders that interacted with us to help us understand resident concerns and access and so that we could develop these amendments just to make a good planned network even better.
Thank you, Tom. And then just one more table. Table two is is some of the other amendments that do not carry a staff recommendation, but other things that that could potentially affect the network or the cost.
Okay, thanks for the overview there, Mike. Chair Wilson has joined the meeting, so make sure the minutes reflect that. He's been on for a little bit while, but I'm going to turn the chair back over to him.
Alder Foster, and thank you for starting the meeting. Something prevented me from getting on my computer on time and I apologize for that. I see a hand up. Margaret, go ahead, please.
Yes, Mike, on the last slide that you showed, is it possible to get that back? Back up?
Yeah. Which one?
The the, okay, the question of Manona. That's a quarter million dollar question. And I'd like to know is that actually, is that discussion actually projected to be come to fruition by next summer?
Yeah, I can take that one, Mike. Yes, the so we've already presented to their council. They are planning to do a public hearing next month and hopefully vote on this by August.
Okay, and then the other question, I don't think I had, maybe I missed it, but the private contributions. It looks like you don't really want to say who that might be from, but.
Yeah, we've got a few businesses that have indicated that they would like some additional service and some of these amendments help them out. And so we've they've expressed some willingness to contribute, but we have not been able to nail them down yet. So.
So can you specify which amendments or which routes? I mean, are those are those increases in service already built in, baked into any of these amendments or the original?
Yes, so it would be amendment nine primarily, that Route L.
And then I have a little bit more material. We're getting to the end, but I think Justin has a few slides. So unless you have any other questions, Margaret, we'll. Okay, thank you. We're getting there. Just a reminder, if you would like to listen to this meeting in Spanish, please call 617-829-6531. If we could translate that, please.
Si desean escuchar, si prefieren escucharla esta presentación en español, lo pueden hacer llamando al teléfono 617 829 6531. Lo tienen en su pantalla.
Thanks, Mike. So, but yeah, as you saw in that chart, and I've actually got another chart that I'll show you once we start discussing any motions. The draft plans or the draft amendments, the draft plan amendments that are recommended by staff sum up to roughly a million dollars per year. As as Margaret saw in that chart, we do have a couple of ways that we think we can get that number down. We also are hopeful in some of our final scheduling that we can get that number down even further. We've tried to be pretty conservative here, but we want to make sure that that folks know that there is a potential for some future budget impact. However, it's important to note this is not necessary in the first year or two. it's important to note this is not necessary in the first year or two. Um, this is more a discussion about what might be necessary in the future. Um, we do have some additional federal funding available to us in the next year and a half or two years um, that would cover this incremental cost. So the question is really about future out years, and how do we continue to pay that? Yeah, go to the next one. So I wanted to respond directly to some of the comments that you've probably heard from, um, from people reaching out, as well as at the public hearing last week. So first, some of the the comments around equity. We have a federal requirement called Title VI that ensures that our federal funding is contingent upon us not making inequitable service decisions. And so, um, for those who have claimed that this is not an equitable plan, um, I just want to assure you that we will do this analysis, um, and we will ensure that it is equitable before it's implemented. Um, and if we believe that we've designed it in a way that will be, um, but if that analysis shows that it's not, we will need to make revisions to the plan. Um, however, there with all the different amendments that Mike talked about, we really can't do an analysis with twenty different variants of will they or won't they? Um, and so we really need some direction from the council on this plan so that we can nail down what we're actually analyzing. Um, but I think a a root of this is in a couple of different things. Um, one is that uh, there's some confusion between individual impacts and disproportionate impacts. So our analysis will focus on ensuring that we are not disproportionately benefiting or impacting any particular demographic group as a whole. That does not mean that individuals will not be impacted. That will certainly be the case with any change. Some individuals will be impacted. It is our responsibility to ensure that those impacts are not borne disproportionately upon any particular group. Um, but I want to emphasize to you all that um, there will be some individual impacts, but we will ensure that it is not being borne by any particular group disproportionately. Um, and the plan, uh, I think some have claimed that the plan is being, is shifting resources to the BRT at the expense of some of the other outlying neighborhoods. I just want to emphasize to you that that is not the case. Um, you know, if we've, Mike has done some analysis, actually shown in in many of the peripheral neighborhoods. Um, service is actually increasing. Um, but those increases are concentrated in higher demand corridors. Um, like, for example, on the south side, Fish Hatchery Road is seeing a huge increase in service. Um, but some of the other folks that aren't near Fish Hatchery Road will have some long walks, and so that's that's the core of this um, in that um, we are not shifting resources away from individual neighborhoods. We are reallocating how those resources are spent within the neighborhoods. On the outreach, um, I feel that I can stand behind our outreach efforts. We've done a lot of work um, around attending and organizing meetings, um, putting out surveys in which we've had over three thousand individual responses, um, advertising on social media, on buses, um, posting our surveys in the buses for riders, sending the texts out to our writers as well so that they have access to those things. Um, I feel confident that we have done a very strong outreach effort. Um, there will be some people who, um, who have not engaged in the process and and feel that they haven't been engaged with. Um, you know, ultimately, there is no level of engagement that will that will bring everyone into the fold, but I feel confident in the the level of effort that we've done. I will say that the area, the outreach to the Southdale neighborhood, um, was a bit late. Um, I think that that is an unfortunate consequence of the way that the, um, the annexation of the Town of Madison was happening. Um, you know, as you all know, they are currently in the Town of Madison, um, in a bit of a representative limbo um, until October of this year, when they become part of the City of Fitchburg. Um, and so I I will admit that that outreach was a bit late. Um, but we have now done that outreach, and we've had several meetings there, um, including, um, a Fitchburg Council meeting where the Fitchburg Council voted to, um, to include Amendment sixteen C. And, uh, and, you know, that's part of our package to discuss here tonight, but ultimately that is entirely paid for by the City of Fitchburg. Um, and we don't see a reason for for Madison to kind of veto Fitchburg's decisions. Um, and I also just want you all to keep in mind, those who benefit, um, you know, are likely not the ones who are gonna show up to the meetings, right? Um, you know, as you have seen in all the maps that we've shown all the way through the process, some of the travel time benefits are are huge for many parts of the cities, city. Um, and just to keep in mind, you know, the number of folks that spoke, um, at the hearing last week is very small in comparison to the number of survey responses we received, as well as the number of people that have attended our public meetings to date. Uh, many of those meetings had over a hundred people in a meeting, so just keep that in mind. Um, and then some have called for this to be delayed. We, while we certainly understand that some people want more time with things, we're not really clear what any delay would achieve. Um, you know, as I mentioned, I think we've done the outreach that is necessary to move this plan forward and and the analysis to to show you what, um, those impacts are. Many of the neighbors that are calling for changes have already proposed amendments, such as four E, which we have included and are presenting here to you for your consideration. Um, and and I, my biggest worry is that any delay will affect the quality of the final product. Um, you know, certainly any delay that we we have is going to delay the implementation. Our current plan calls for the summer of twenty twenty-three to be kind of our soft rollout phase, where we launch this in June of twenty twenty-three. We monitor quickly for any schedule changes that are necessary, and then we implement those schedule changes in August of twenty twenty-three in advance of the fall semester. Um, with a change of this magnitude, there will, we won't get everything right the first time. Schedules and travel times will be a little bit off. Um, and it's important for us to have that adjustment period so that we can make sure we go into the fall semester with a a robust, strong schedule. Uh, and then every year beyond that, as is our normal practice, um, you know, I know the last couple of years have been um, not quite normal. Um, but typically, in every summer, every August, we will make, we would make adjustments in in our schedules and and routes if necessary. And so I just want to emphasize with you all that this is not a set it and forget it situation. Um, we will continue to monitor and will continue to make adjustments um, going forward, um, in perpetuity. Go to the next slide. So, um, as we work through tonight, um, our our plan is to, um, for to work through the different amendments, have you all vote on which ones to include in the draft plan, and then ultimately, uh, make that a recommendation as amended to the full council for consideration tomorrow night. Um, once that council has acted, we will do that final analysis. We will go through the details of schedules and bus stop locations, and then we'll bring that back to the Transportation Commission for final approval later in the year. Um, all moving towards an implementation next summer. Um, and then as we, I have a, uh, Mike, if I can switch to my screen share. So I have a another version of the table that Mike shared. This is, for those of you who have been through the city budgeting process, um, this may look somewhat familiar, um, in that we kind of monitor along the way, uh, what has passed and what hasn't, and kind of accumulate, have a cumulative budget impact on that. Um, but I've arranged the amendments in a strategic way here. Um, and certainly you all can move, make motions however you please. Um, but, uh, we feel that there's a couple of different buckets here that might make sense to consider together. Um, and then we can go, do the remainder on a one-by-one basis. Um, this first bucket, which includes one, three C, seven, eight, ten, eleven A, and twelve. Um, we feel these are ones that have a a very nominal budget impact, um, have, who've largely heard only positive things about. Um, and so we feel that you could probably move those together as a group, um, since the the discussion will be fairly limited there. Uh, the next group would be the Fitchburg amendments. These are the ones that were approved by the City of Fitchburg, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen C, and seventeen A. Again, Fitchburg is paying for these, um, and they have voted to to do these. Um, we don't see any reason why Madison should veto that. Um, you know, ultimately, we may not agree on all points around the planning of those, but this is an unfortunate, um, situation for the way that our, um, regional partnership is structured, since we are not a regional transit authority. Ultimately, they have final say on on what is operated in their city. Um, Amendment four, as Mike mentioned, there are four different variants of those. Um, staff is recommending four D, um, but I do anticipate some discussion around the potential for four E, um, and so, you know, I would suggest we take those. Um, and then the remainder, um, these, the last five here that are staff recommended, and then the remainder that are not staff recommended, um, I just suggest you take those on a one-on one-by-one basis, um, to consider for amending into the draft plan.
And if I, sorry, Justin, if I could interrupt and add add one more thing, we also do have uh, Daniel Costantino from Jared Walker and Associates online, so if there are any questions that you feel that, uh, his help would be, uh, helpful, um, and just, uh, just to mention that Jared Walker and Associates did help us with this plan, and so just to thank them for their their help.
So, so again, just to, my suggestion is that you all move through the amendments and decide whether or not to amend them into the draft plan. And then at the end, once you've adjudicated all of those amendments, then make a recommendation or not to the full council to adopt the plan as you have amended. And with that, I'll turn over to all of you for questions or discussion.
All right, thank you, Justin. Um, Alder Foster, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Uh, Justin, could you put the spreadsheet back up one more minute? Just wanted to get confirmation. So on the top, yeah, that says net total Madison cost change. So right now, it's sitting at, uh, negative five hundred eighty thousand dollars. I'm understanding that to mean we have five hundred and eighty that were, without adopting any of the amendments, there's five hundred eighty thousand dollars below the sort of cost to continue, uh, sort of budget for that. As we go through these amendments, that number will be changing, and if it got to zero, that would be sort of current cost, and if it starts to go positive, that means spending more than uh, what the sort of the budgeted amount was. Is that, is that right?
That, that is correct. Um, and we, as we developed the draft plan, there was some level of uh, of funds that were not allocated in that plan, and so that's the reflection of the five hundred eighty thousand.
Okay, and so then if we, I think as you said earlier, someone said earlier, if we get through all of the uh, staff recommended ones, and those are all recommended for adoption, we would expect that net total Madison cost change, instead of being minus five eighty K, it would be upwards of plus one million, right? That it's, it would be about a million more with all of the staff recommended amendments?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Alder Harington, can you go ahead, please?
Oh, thank you, Chair. Um, Jared Walker and Associates, um, they are on this call. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and my question really is about, um, uh, the disaggregate and aggregation of the data, and so I don't know if that goes to staff or that specifically uh, goes to Jared Walker and Associates.
Uh, do you think you could ask either of us and we'll figure it out?
Okay, let me put it out there, and whoever is, uh, more equipped to answer that question, please do so. Um, within the context of the, um, network redesign, it was used several times, communities of color and disadvantaged, and that was used, um, throughout the, um, the document, and specifically referring to the Title VI, and that's, that's where mine still is stuck. Um, uh, was the data, is the data, uh, when you're looking at disparities, is it, uh, was the data aggregated, uh, or was it disaggregated?
I think I can answer that, Mike, if you want me to. Um, so the, the data that was used in the draft plan, um, described population in general. It described, uh, low-income people, and it described people of color. Um, those designations, um, were taken, uh, and analyzed at the block group level, um, which is, you know, basically the level at which there's several blocks together, so maybe that's a couple hundred people, kind of with the size of it, the number of people depends, but it's it's the block group, which is a sense, a small census unit, which is the smallest unit at which the that information is available. Um, and specifically with regards to communities of color, um, it's worth pointing out that the, we, the data that was used was for all people who identify as some race or ethnicity other than white, non-Hispanic. Um, and the reason for that is basically that in Madison, the numbers of non-white people are relatively small to begin with. And so as you begin to disaggregate into every separate group, you get numbers that are so small that they, the actual information you can get from them is less and less meaningful and less and less reliable at the small block group level. So when you start cutting out into very, into more specific groups, then the data was only reliable at, for example, the census tract level or the census subdivision level, which are much larger, and so it's much harder to figure out. Basically, you can't say if in a census group, a census group can go a mile away from where a bus stop is, and so then it doesn't, the data just doesn't have that much relevance anymore. If that makes sense.
And and Alder Harington McKay, if I could add one thing, you know, I know we've had some discussions with the ACLU about doing that equity analysis in the next phase in that disaggregated way. Um, and we've, we've told them some of this limitations on the data, but we certainly are going, are going to try to do that. Um, and, uh, but as Daniel said, there are some limitations with the data that, um, might make that more difficult, but uh, we will, we will make our best effort to do that in a disaggregated way.
And so the data that will be supplied uh, for the Title VI analysis will be aggregated data. Is that correct?
We will, we will most likely need to do it both ways. Um, you know, as as Daniel mentioned, the the data for the disaggregated data is going to be more challenging. Um, and so for our official Title VI that submit to the FTA will likely have to be aggregated. Um, but, uh, we still expect to do the analysis in a disaggregated way to to see the analysis and how it turns out.
Okay, my, my final question, or it may not be my final question, um, but my, my other question is is that uh, you said that if that analysis comes, that you you've, um, made every effort to be within the lines of 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 eliminating any disparities. If that analysis comes back and there are areas that you need to make adjustments, if you're making um, uh, this redesign within current budget, how are we going to, uh, make those allowances, and how are you prepared, when I say you, what what is the, the, the plan to make those adjustments if necessary?
So I don't think we can answer that until we know exactly what those are. Um, you know, we'll, we'll be able to see if there are impacts, we'll be able to see specifically where those impacts are happening. Um, and if so, we will, um, prepare a, a revision package for you all to approve, um, for not, uh, for your consideration um, that we feel will address and correct any of those inequities based on the data.
Okay, those are my questions for now. Thank you.
May I add one thing to the response on the data and the disaggregation? I just wanted to say, um, I think there's something that's very important to understand about kind of the the quality of the day, of the data.
about kind of the the quality of the day of the data from the Census Bureau, which is ultimately what we end up using. Um, is basically there is a conflict between making an analysis that is geographically specific and tells you whether people in a specific area are losing out versus um data that will be, say racially specific and telling you whether people from a specific group are are losing out or or winning out. And so one way or another, we we can, we can analyze um data that's either very disaggregated geographically by geography or very disaggregated by race. Um, and I would argue that in Madison, because there are the university, you know, has a huge impact on the data on both race and low income, that perhaps the geographically specific will give you a clearer image, even if it does aggregate people of several racial groups together.
Thank you. All right, Paul Tsar, you're next. Go ahead, please.
Thank you very much, and Justin and all the staff, thank you very much for all the work that you have put into this. So I just want to understand just a little bit about the equity analysis. Uh, if I think what I what I heard is that we're going through this work and then you folks will have the equity analysis. And then if there are changes, then we have to make the changes again. If you can just speak again, what's the timeline and what's the risk, the reasoning for for that?
Yeah, so the the reason, I'll start with the reason. So part of it, um, you know, in our draft plan document, um, it wasn't a full fledged Title VI analysis, but there was a lot of analysis of impacts um to low income and uh populations and people of color. Um, but as you know, as you were presenting here today, there's, you know, twenty some amendments um to that plan. Um, and so we, in order to update the analysis, we can't do an individual analysis of each of the twenty different amendments because it really depends on what, if this amendment passes, but that one doesn't. Um, and so we, there's just way too many variables in the plan right now um to do a full fledged analysis of that. However, once you all vote on a plan, and again, this is a plan document, this is not implementation, um, this will, that will allow us to go down that path of doing the the analysis. Um, we anticipate bringing that analysis back to the Transportation Commission. So this this is where we straddle the line of policy and implementation. Um, so the next phase would be going to the Transportation Commission to approve those implementation details. That includes the equity analysis. It also includes the detailed schedules. So you know, when the, you know, when buses will arrive. Um, and also includes the bus stop locations. You know, in many cases, we'll need to be making changes to the bus stops. And so that will have to be approved as well. So the timeline for that, um, you know, we're expecting that sometime in the fall. Um, but I don't have a a hard date for you yet until we really get into it.
Thank you, Justin. I I have more questions, Tom. It's clearly, I have one one more question. Can I just go ahead and ask a question? I just want to make sure that. So I I think, you know, I, as 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 we heard last last week, some uh uh, you know, folks coming and and talk to 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 us, to the public meeting. Then it seems like if we are seeing new amendments come to the table. Uh, and and it's exciting because, you know, what I heard is that there are, we're making some amendments based on what we hear in the community. It's from others and 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 from, you know, from these conversations. So I just want to understand that this is shifting shifted based on community impact that we are receiving uh late. Uh, so, and it just uh kind of uh make me wonder, you know, why all of a sudden we have all these new uh voices that are telling us this is not working and now we are in new amendments. So good on that to tell us that. And I'm just speaking from a humble perspective because I have no knowledge in the planning and design. But I'm I'm just getting a little bit worried that uh shouldn't we allow more time for more folks to come forward and and bring some of those issues? Because my biggest concern is that voice, the voices that are being heard are the voices that maybe are helping to make these amendments and introduce these new changes. That's what I am assuming, but please do correct me if I'm wrong. That's that's what it sounds like, but do please correct me if I'm wrong.
So I I can, the the elders or the amendments that were shown tonight as as changes are not things. Um, with the exception of amendment eighteen, which maybe Alder also would like to talk about. Um, the others are are not just things that we came up with in the last couple of days. They've been active conversations going on for several weeks. Um, and uh, and they just weren't quite there when we presented to you on May sixteenth. Um, but they um, they have been, we have been able to vet them now. And they've been requested by the communities and we've vetted to make sure that they work. Um, and that's why we're showing them to you. We're adding them in. Um, these are not things that we, yeah, it's, this is, they're based on feedback that we heard, you know, a month or so ago. Um, and it just, we haven't had a touch point with you since uh May sixteenth, except for at the at the hearing last week, which we also presented several of these.
Thank you, Justin, and everybody for all the work.
All right, Margaret, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I have an, I have some questions. I have a lot of questions, um, but I'm just gonna pop a couple of them out there right now. Um, Justin, when we, a a big part of the fundamental design constraints um for this project was a charge to stay, to not, to stay within the 2019 budget, operating budget for paratran, for transit service. So I'd like to know what the uh 2019 budget was. And I'd like to know total, I see, I see, I see adding and subtracting for particular route changes. So I'd like to know what the bottom line estimate is the cost for the cost of this system. And I know there are a lot of, there's a lot of squish in that question. But how are you thinking about that?
Uh, sure. So we've, all of our estimating has been largely revolving around the number of hours. Uh, you know, as you know, obviously with inflation, um, the dollars don't translate on a year to year basis. But we've been, our target has been the number of hours that we had in 2019. Um, and I don't have the number right in front of me for our budget, but it's approximately $60 million. Um, it was approximately $60 million in in 2019. Um, and we're, I think, sixty-four, sixty-five now, just with inflation. Um, and so, uh, but yeah, the the overall intent here is to match the number of hours that we had in 2019. The, we've translated them to dollars just to reflect, um, you know, that that delta change in a tangible term. Um, and and we've, just for your reference, it's largely based on a hundred dollar an hour rate. Um, our actual cost is actually around a hundred and thirty dollars an hour. But there are some of our funding sources that are, that do change with service levels, such as fares. Obviously, you know, if we add more service, we expect some additional ridership and therefore fares. Um, and our federal funding also increases roughly half proportionally to our service. So for every hour that we add, or every percent that we add in service, we would expect to see federal funding increase by half a percent because half of that formula is based on um the amount of service we provide. So.
On the, for the operating side? This is coming, you're talking about the capital side.
It that it is capital, but we are able to use some of it for our preventive maintenance.
Yes, but that's not a half a percent of your costs on the operating side. Is it?
The, I'm I'm talking about our total federal funding would go up by half a percent for each. So yes, I mean, some of that is, there's some nuance there around what we can use for operating versus what is only maintenance versus what is capital.
Yeah. What is the capital budget at this point roughly? What was it in 2019?
Uh, capital budget in 2019 was basically just bus replacement and our facilities. I I don't have that in front of me, but I can certainly get it, send it to you, or I can pull it up.
Okay.
I could just um add to that response. The total number of bus service hours before the pandemic was a little bit over 400,000 annual service hours. And um, part of that too is that when we add service, when we allocate all of our costs, when we add another bus onto the road, we don't necessarily increase all of our costs. For example, we have some supervisors and um uh, you know, dispatchers, things like that, that don't necessarily add in a perfectly linear fashion. So it's a bit of a complicated answer.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's an extremely complicated answer. And it was an extremely complicated ask from the mayor that, you know, where there is this. I I know that it's easier to talk about it in terms of service hours because of all of the thing, all of the details that both of you are raising with how you calculate the costs. And part of my motivation for the question is that um I would hate to see us approve a system uh and put it on the road in twenty-two and twenty-three only have, only to massively cut it in twenty-five because gas prices are continuing to be what they are right now, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and and so I guess I'll, the next question I'll ask, since I know it's budget season for city government managers, um, you know, have you, do you, I I don't even know, need to know what they are right now. But do you have, are you working on the projections for twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six? I think that you're usually charged with um, what, five years' projections for the city?
So, and sorry, to to circle back to your previous comment about 2019 capital budget was a little over 14 million. But and to your point about projecting, typically, we do a five-year capital budget projection. We do not do the same with operating, um, at least officially. Um, you know, certainly, we are tracking that more unofficially just to make sure that we don't have any landmines ahead of us. But um, but yeah, officially, there's no um future year operating budget projections in in the official budget.
Okay, thank you. That's it for the moment.
All right, thank you, Margaret. Any other general questions before we get into the amendments? Okay, seeing none. Um, Mike or Justin, could you put, could you share that? Oh, Margaret, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I actually um want to ask a procedural question here, which is, um, you know, if we're talking about amendments, it kind of presumes that we're, we're good with the base, with the base system to which those, you know, amendments are added. And a number of members of the public have asked us to um move the, move this, refer this to our next meeting yeah, in July. And I'm wondering if it's in order, I I would like to clear up the issue of whether the committee supports referral to the July meeting or not. So is that in order right now, a motion to refer to the July eighteenth, 2022 meeting?
Second.
Sorry, Margaret, did you make the motion?
Yeah, I'll make it.
Okay, now, second, Alder Hinkin, McKinnney, um, would you like to speak further to your motion?
Sure. Um, I under, I I, on the one hand, and first, I want to praise planning staff and the consultants for the work that they have done, uh, particularly planning staff and metro staff. The work really has been exemplary. I do feel that um where we have fallen down on this process is in two, is in two places. Um, I'm sure there are others, but two stick out and two are ones that the public have brought up, brought up. Um, and the the first that, yes, this last period of public comment has been pretty robust. Um, the staff has met with a ton of people, a ton of people who hadn't had uh their voices heard before. Word got out to a number of people who said, oh, I hadn't, you know, this is the first I'm hearing about this. And and that's great. The first stage of public engagement was not as robust. And sort of back, so having that input coming in late is causing, is is difficult. It causes staff to have to, at the last minute, be putting together, you know, amendments to respond to the public and kudos uh for doing it. But I say, as a, as a committee member, um, it's, it's extremely difficult to integrate all of this information and have a vision of the whole system and whether it's going to uh serve our needs. And I, and I also think that in uh, you know, it does start, we do start creeping into combining the route restructure with the BRT plans. And we do start solidifying timelines. Like, for example, if we were to approve this tonight and we came back with a Title VI analysis or or the feds looked at our Title VI analysis and said this isn't sufficient. Um, you know, when do we need to have that analysis done in order to meet our timeline, right? We're being told that we have to approve this tonight to keep our timeline for implementation during the summer of 2023. And I absolutely agree with you, Justin. We need to be able to have those months to tweak. Um, but it, you know, this is an area where I can understand where the public, for example, has been confused when they've wanted to talk about specific bus stops or specific, you know, walking distances because, you know, they were told, well, we're not talking about that now. Well, we're gonna be talking about it pretty, pretty darn soon. And what's the plan for public input uh for public input there? And then the other thing I have, I think that there's an underlying theme that has come up with a lot of the comments, um, which is, you know, I I do think the committee and the consultants gen genuinely have tried to come up with a system that is more just and equitable to um members of the community than our, than our current system. But unfortunately, baked into our method is an inequity. And that inequity, and I, and I'm embarrassed that I didn't say something about this a year plus ago. But by relying on data primarily about employment centers and focusing your system on, yes, we know, I know, I have read the data from Madison specifically. And I know that most transit trips are to and from work. And that's actually, in many ways, a shortcoming of our system because it shows that we're not serving those um other needs that the community has, trips to the grocery store, et cetera. Um, but by focusing Um, but by focusing on employment and access to jobs, we've missed out on all of the transit-dependent folks who are not employed and are not seeking employment. Um, so I do think that that's why I would like to see the committee vote on whether to move forward tonight or to give it another month to put it together. The the last thing is, I'm very, you know, to, it's been hard enough for me to absorb this. The city council members would be getting this in their laps tomorrow night after we've made whatever amendments. They're getting like less than twenty-four hours uh to. So that's what I have to say. That's why I'm putting this motion forward.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. I'm gonna allow staff to respond first. I see uh Justin in the queue first for staff. Go ahead, Justin.
Sure, thanks. And thanks, Margaret. I think um what you've raised, I I think, uh, one, uh, just to kind of go backwards on the data piece, um, I just want to emphasize, um, yes, not everyone is going to a job. But most of the destinations where people are going are also places where people work, such as grocery stores, things like that. And so, um, you know, again, to get back to the um the data that's available to us, you know, it's very different, it's very difficult to disaggregate, you know, all the different trip purposes and still be accurate. Um, you know, we can, we can try to be more precise, but in the process, be less accurate. Um, and so that's why employment is used as a proxy, but really because that's a proxy for where people want to go, whether or not they're going there for their job or for recreation or for services or or whatever. Um, and then I I just want to go back, I know, in previous version, uh, in previous phases of the outreach, um, you know, certainly around the ridership coverage debate. Um, I I don't, I I guess I would disagree that 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 outreach wasn't sufficient. Um, and and maybe Daniel can speak a little bit more. Um, it's very common in these projects for, at a theoretical level, uh, which is where we were at the ridership coverage, kind of the policy level debate, for uh the public outreach to point us in one direction. And then when people actually see that operationalized on the ground and that impacts some individuals, those individuals that are impacted obviously don't like it anymore. And so the 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 pendulum swings a little bit in the other direction. Um, I I think we actually had a lot of feedback um in that last phase. Um, and ultimately, that that culminated in a vote by this board, um, the Policy and Planning Board, um, to to give us that direction. Um, and and at the time, we all felt comfortable with that determination. Um, and then the last thing I'll just mention is is around delay. Um, I I think the bigger question is, what would what would a delay actually achieve? Um, you know, what? I I know that we as staff, you know, our public outreach is is often planned weeks in advance. Um, and um, and frankly, it's going to be difficult for us to do a whole lot of public outreach, you know, between now and the next TPB meeting. Um, and so I worry that it's just going to be a kick the can down the road situation, um, and and that we're not going to eventually get to a decision. So, um, but that's that's all I would say.
Thank you, Justin. I'm actually gonna jump to Daniel, um, because you were referred to by Justin. So, Daniel, go ahead.
Um, thank you. Yeah, um, I so Justin already made the uh first point that I wanted to say, which is that, um, yeah. People, we don't measure access to jobs because we think most people's trips are to work. Um, there's a lot of data, kind of, the the broad consensus is that commutes is about twenty percent of people's travel, varies a little bit from one place to another. But um, so it's not because of that. It's because um, as Justin said, most of the places people go to, and most of the places people go to frequently, um, are places of employment. And so there's no one set of data that gives you as much information about where people might need to go that's better than the total number of jobs in an area. Um, so we're not, we didn't choose that because we wanted to prioritize commuting. Wanted to choose it because we wanted to have a broad measure to show everything that might be accessible. Um, and certainly, within the actual design process, in the actual meetings where we had a long, drawn-out conversations about whether a bus should turn left here or right there, um, a lot more than just, well, how, what is the number of jobs in this location came up. There is, well, what about this medical facility? What about this grocery store? What about these things? We've heard this. So all that information was incorporated in that, and I think it's important to say that at this point. Um, as regards the prior rounds of outreach, um, yeah, I think they were actually quite rigorous as well. Um, there were thousands of people who engaged with this project um at both the Choices Report phase and the Alternatives phase. Um, there were uh meetings, there was outreach in the community, uh, and, you know, even even at the height of COVID. Um, and it is normal um for the uh response to this kind of process to get bigger and bigger as the process goes. And that's one of the reason what reasons why it's done in multiple phases, because it gives more and more people time to hear about it and to react to it. And so it makes sense, once you get to an actual, okay, we think this is the plan outreach phase, that that is when the most feedback is received. And I think that the work that has happened um over the course of this last outreach period in developing the amendments is explicitly there to try to take into account as much as possible um of the input received in this phase while remaining um as true as possible to the direction that this board gave uh on the development of the plan in the first place. Um, so obviously, the board should make its own decision as to um whether you're ready to move forward on any amendments. But I do want to say that the the process to date has, based on my experience um of comparable process in other places, been quite rigorous.
Thank you, Daniel. Benjamin Benjamin, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, Ben Line with the MPO, the Greater Madison MPO, for those who don't don't know me. I've been on the project staff with Metro and and the JWA team from the beginning. Um, and I just wanted to say in regards to the the question about data and looking at um employment data, that that's that's the easily mappable, that's the reliable data, as as has been said already. Um, there are other types of data that we also looked at and considered that are not as easy to put in a printed document. Um, so many of you um in this body are also on the MPO Policy Board, and you know that we subscribe to streetlight data. Um, it's location-based services, so your and your cup is pinging, or your 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 phone is pinging to find you a cup of Starbucks coffee. It's sending out a signal that then gets anonymized. And so because of that, we can't really say where you live because it's, the data has been disaggregated that way. Um, but we can also say that within this one square kilometer area, where are people going? For every trip, by every mode, at any time of the day. And we saw again and again, looking at this, that a lot of the folks who live in South Madison or Southwest Madison or North Madison, their travel behavior is not like a lot of other other area residents, where they're trying to go to downtown Madison or to UW. They're actually trying to go around the periphery and kind of follow that Beltline route. And so we designed routes G, routes H. Um, sorry, with the amendment, I I'm gonna forget, maybe is it L that's the the far east sort of north to um Owl Creek, that's O. Um, but there are routes that we designed, F, that are actually serving those travel patterns that people who live in those areas are already doing and that aren't served by the current transit network. And so, again, that's data that really doesn't translate to a map on a printed page very well. But when we were looking at neighborhoods and looking at routing, we would flip to those analyses and production analysis, we'd take a look at it, we'd see where people were going. And and that really helped inform and guide a lot of this. Um, because it it is quick, on the fly, it's a lot more reliable than doing, um, going out and and standing at the bus stop and asking people where they're going. Um, and it's a lot faster and 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 we get much better market penetration. So I just want to let you know that we we're looking at a lot of other data. It's not just where people work. Um, but we do run into data limitations where we can't see where everybody lives, where everybody goes to daycare, or where everybody goes grocery shopping. Thank you.
Thank you, Benjamin. Uh, Mike, go ahead.
Uh, thanks. Just a couple of quick things uh that I wanted to add. Um, so early on in the project, when we were talking about existing conditions, choices, and the alternatives, as we did hear a lot of that um that people wanted a more robust engagement process. Uh, the other things that we were hearing was that people were sort of had had engagement fatigue um that, you know, they could kind of give their give their time, um, you know, selectively. And we were also hearing very specific things. They wanted Route nineteen back, they wanted Route fourteen back. Um, they wanted very specific things. And um, and so this is not uncommon. Typically, when we we have higher-level conversations, you know, we 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 hear, we don't, we don't get as much feedback as when we have much more specific uh proposals out there. And so that's kind of why we we started telling people, you know, hold on to those very specific thoughts, because in we will have a a later phase where we'll come out and we'll have a much more robust, where we can come and talk, you know, with smaller groups in a s- more uh more specific area and speak to these uh these more specific things. Um, just one more thing is that over the last few weeks, we haven't, uh, with the exception probably of the Southdale neighborhood, we've been having uh ver- the conversations have been pretty um uh consistent. We've had a, we've heard a lot from the south side, we've heard a lot from the north side. Uh, we've heard a lot from the north side neighborhood, north of Northport, that they wanted all-day service, uh, the Pick and Save, uh Owl Creek area. Um, and a lot on the south side, uh, Olin Avenue, Fish Hatchery, uh Badger, Rusk, Brom, those types of areas. Uh, so I wanted to point that that out, that, you know, it's not, a- as Justin mentioned earlier, um, we're not sort of seeing a new thing pop up. Um, we're seeing a a pretty consistent conversation. And so we feel that we're kind of right at that apex, so we're really getting a lot of good participation uh right now. Um, with that, I'll I'll hand it back over. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, Alder Foreman, go ahead, please.
Um, thank you, Chair. Um, so our next Transportation Policy Planning Board meeting is six weeks from today. Um, so it's seven eighteen, and then the council meeting that would be after that would be seven nineteen. Um, so it would be a similar situation if we're worried about the council um not having enough time to review what happens at Transportation Policy Planning Board and not having enough time um to make their um decisions about, you know, what what happened the previous night. Um, I think this is going to be complicated for the council, no matter when it comes to the council, in my opinion. And the council likely will have the benefit of us having bundled some stuff, and they can decide to pull things out and um and and figure that out from there. Um, but a six-week delay is is a significant delay. And so I I have two questions related to that, and one, one would be for the uh Margaret, who, if she was willing, to actually um give some a little bit more detail on what we would do with that six weeks, so it's clear how uh that would be used. So we have, you know, very specific goals, because I think, you know, we could delay this for six weeks, and people are gonna ask for it, and the public asks for it to be delayed again and again and again. And then I'm also very curious for staff to explain um what a six-week delay means um in the, you know, the the period for that trial during the summer and being able to implement it, um, you know, in August. Um, so how six weeks affects them, because we've heard there's a lot of other steps that happens after this. Um, and so that that would be my two questions, is what do we do with that delay? And then, um, you know, using that time. Um, and then, uh, you know, what does that look like for the 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 rest of the process?
Okay, it appears that Margaret is willing. Go ahead, Margaret.
Yeah, Chen, um little, well, I'll hold that thought. Um, first, we could consider meeting more than six weeks, you know, sooner than six weeks from now. I know that we've had we've had some difficulty getting a date for another June meeting uh because we ran into Juneteenth, then people aren't available on Flag Day. Uh, but we could give it a shot to give another meeting, but that's a legit question. And I guess what I would see the value of it being uh would be, for example, on some of these uh situations where we have four or five different versions of an amendment to try to go over tho- to try to reach some kind of consensus, whether that's, you know, among staff or continued discussion with the various neighborhood groups. So I think in particular of amendments for A, B, C, D, and E, with E just hitting us pretty recently. Um, and so so that would be my, that that's what I would see. Um, and also, uh, a li- you know, a little more chance for public buy-in um before we move ahead. Um. So that's 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 why I put it up in that's why I wanted us to talk about this first, because obviously, this was the front page headline this morning. Um. And so it just seems to me that in the interest, uh, in public interest, we should have this discussion.
Thank you, Margaret. Uh, Staff, did you want to respond to the other part of the question, Alder Foreman? What would this six-week delay mean?
Uh, sure, I can do that. Um, so basically, what it means is that we would lose that soft-launch ability. Um, so we would have to implement um the the service as we intend for it to be throughout the school year, through the semester. Um, I I do think that that's probably not the best decision to ensure that it's future success. Um, I think the, um, you know, as I mentioned, the schedules aren't going to be perfect right out of the gate. You know, we're designing a lot of routes from scratch. Um, and uh, and likely will need to make some adjustments, and and we won't have the ability to do that. Um, so that means that the on-time performance, um, you know, throughout the school year, starting in the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year, is likely not going to not be all that good.
Thank you, Justin. Margaret, did you want to all back up on that, or did you have a separate question?
Uh, no, actually, just a a point that I forgot to make, which was a specific constituency um that uh I I do think have some I'm I'm concerned about the lateness of and the quality of the input that we've gotten from them. And that is the community of people who have uh used paratransit, whether it's fixed route or door-to-door service. Um, I, you know, we came to that information late. I think it's not, you know, for me, it's I have a lot of questions about it. And actually, I have a lot of fiscal questions about it too, because obviously, uh door-to-door, you know, I'm very curious about and and and, no, we're not gonna really know this until we hit the street with the new system. But I'm very curious about how many people are gonna have to move from uh using fixed route, which is generally preferable for everybody involved, to door-to-door uh because of the changes in the system. That hasn't, that has potentially a very large fiscal impact, as large as the whole system changeover and introducing BRT? No. Uh, absolutely not. But uh, you know, paratransit is very important to this community. People with disabilities have been an integral part of metro operations and metro, you know, clientele for decades. And I and I I think they need it is only right that they be afforded every opportunity to participate. And we have heard some feedback that that has not been the case. So that was, I just wanted to add that in, since I'd forgotten to say it.
Okay, I'm going to jump to Benjamin. I assume it's a follow-up on. Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I just, I I wanted to say this has come up before. Um, it's, of course, been been discussed in our our sort of design team meetings. Um, I'm also on the Dane County Specialized Transportation Commission. I'm representing the MPO there. And Mike has come and presented on various stages of this project um twice, I believe. And then there was one night that he had a conflict with the south side um neighborhood meeting. And so I threw up prepared the or provided the presentation that night to the the Specialized Transportation Commission. Um, and so the Deputy Director of Access to Independence, representatives from the Area Agency on Aging. Um, you know, all of the the folks who make up that board have been um, you know, certainly notified and involved in discussions. Um, I've been sending out updates to specialized transportation providers as part of my role at the MPO, keeping them informed. So, you know, if if there are people, once again, who feel that they've they've slipped through the cracks and that they have, their voice has not been heard or they've not been considered. Um, I think if that's really, it is an individual thing that that has been said. Unless we go and knock on every single door, it is impossible to talk to every single person. Um, that said, the needs of seniors and people with disabilities and the mobility impaired um have been considered and that the that representatives of the the agencies that work with those groups have been involved throughout the process. And as far as I know, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know that any of those groups that that participate in the STC have asked for follow-up presentations, although we offered that, um whether it's to well, to any any of the service or transportation providers or their their clients. So I don't, I don't think there's been any request for follow-up from any of those groups.
Thank you, Benjamin. Okay, I'm getting back to Alder Furman's question. Alder Furman, I'm sorry, we kind of deviated from your question a bit there. Um, did you have anything further?
No, I don't be sorry, Chair. Those, that was all incredibly helpful information. Um, so I I thank everybody for that. I did want to point out, Margaret noted that we um, you know, should should understand what the difference is and the amendments are. Um, there are staff recommendations for all all the amendments. So when we get to something like, you know, the difference between um, you know, what is a D and E uh for a D and E, there is one that's recommended by staff and there's one that's not. Um, I'd like it when we're, if if we move forward with this, and I do think we should move forward with this this evening. Um, I'd like more information on why staff is recommending an amendment over another. Um, but to be clear, I mean, all the amendments do have recommendations, whether staff has a thumbs up or a thumbs down. I think we could have an opportunity this evening to really dive into that more um and understand. Um, if if through those discussions, um, we hear um that there are huge pieces missing on on why recommendations are one way and why, you know, something was not recommended, I might certainly support um trying to 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 build more time. But right now, I'm just, you know, I'm not seeing the the benefit in adding more time. And I do think tonight we're going to have an opportunity um if we start looking at these amendments, better understanding where we are. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alder Furman. Alder Foster, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Thanks, Chair. Um, just wanted to offer one uh clarification. So we uh, we can't actually refer this item to our next um meeting. We can recommend uh referral to the Common Council back to us at our next meeting, but this item will be on the Common Council's agenda tomorrow. It will be taken up. And all we can do tonight is vote on our recommendation for the council. Um, might seem like a slight difference, but if we do, uh, if we decide now to to recommend referral and pass on taking up any of this work and the council decides to not uh re-refer that, then they'll be acting without our our recommendation, which I think would be um a a real tragedy because I think the the folks on this call um have really been the closest to it. And I I would certainly like this body to put put forward um a recommendation. So I I think with that in mind, I I do I do not support a a motion to refer at this time. And I'd really like to get in and to work to put forward um our best recommendation at this point uh for the Common Council to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Alder Hingham-McKinney, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I am um supporting the recommendation for referral to the council and let the council decide. And um uh, this is a, this is a major investment and I and I must admit that uh when uh this body made the recommendation, because you're absolutely correct, this body was asked for direction going forward. And um, the ridership was solid and I voted for that. But I must admit that my and uh some, I I was reading that some, someone said that if you're not, you know, on board for this, there's a sense of ignorance. And so I I was ignorant. But I have gone through and read the report of Jared and Associates, and it was thorough. I went through and looked at and reread all of the communications. And what still comes up to for me is number one, the budgetary constraints. But um, in the documents, it uses, it talked about centers of employment. And for me, I wanted to know what those centers of employment was uh or were. It uh, and I went through and a list of of things that this document or this redesign would develop. And um, it said the medium-low income uh person can reach eighty thousand five hundred jobs within forty-five minutes by transit and walkability. So that sounded good, but for me, um, I needed to know what kind of jobs. And I I hear that using the jobs um as an aggregate um uh uh driver, I get that. But when I asked myself the question and those communities that have been asking me the questions, I could not, I could not answer that. And it also said that um um eleven percent are within the one-fourth miles of service every fifteen minutes. Well, it also said that prior to that, it was like um uh nineteen percent. So so I'm not going to go through um the uh what I use to make my decision that uh a recommendation for referral was in order. Is this that the staff has done an excellent job? There has been more presented before me. And for me to solely uh settle on ridership was an error on my part. It should have been a consideration of ridership, but also other variables. And I hear the staff and the consultants said that uh all of these were considered. But in my reading, I was not able to land on that. And so for me to approve this as presented tonight, um, I just cannot do that because I still have some questions. Uh, and if we're able to um really come together and and um uh with uh more meetings or another meeting prior to um the the next council meeting, I would certainly support that. And so I will be supporting and will continue to support that referral.
Thank you, Alder Hingham-McKinney. Um, Audrey, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Um, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to clarify. So since we are voting, I just, we have a full attendance today, right? So I do, do I get to vote or not? Could you clarify that one, please?
Yeah, so we have one vacancy and two alternates. Margaret is the first alternate, so she will be in voting status. And um, as long as we, as long as we don't have anyone drop off of the meeting, um, you would not be in voting status. If someone drops off the meeting, then you would be moved to voting status. But thank you for clarifying that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Audrey. Um, yeah, I was muted.
Yeah.
All right, um, Chris, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I don't know where other board members are. I would just strongly encourage you not to refer this. Uh, um, I mean, for many of the reasons that we've heard already, I I don't think that will get us in a much better position in the next month or the next year. I think we approved a draft plan and asked for improvements and we and we got a lot of those improvements. Um, but more importantly, if we refer this, we do not get to go through the amendments right now, which I would very much like to do. Um, and I think um we should be talking through those.
Thank you, Chris. Um, Alder Miyaz, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Um, as a chair, you know, this is very discouraging and very frustrating for me because I came to the last meeting last week and I didn't even get a chance to speak. And I, this is the second time tonight that I'm actually raising my hand. So I don't know if you want to look at the recording later on and actually see that. But this is a very frustrating. But basically, I am definitely supporting Margaret's uh uh proposal to refer. We've heard a great deal of conversation from the public flat just a week ago, and things are still not being done. Um, and also too, I mean, there's amendments coming up at the last minute. So how is this, when we talk about being equitable in this city? I mean, when I fought for the amendments on the north side of Madison here, uh, for it to be able to go up to uh Mendota Mental Health, for it to be uh go to Pick and Save, to make sure this process is done equitable, I shouldn't have to. I mean, transportation itself, I know that has a civil rights, we have a civil rights department that actually handles all this. So I have still a lot of questions, just like the public has. All the alders, you can ask them how, what the fiscal note is right now. Some alders don't even know what the fiscal note of how much this is going to cost. Some of the alders don't even know all the things that are uh going on as far as with the different amendments. So and I, and even all the alders are here to vouch for every single district. So I think giving us time, hearing from what we've heard last week from all the residents that have came forth, I think we must give this a little bit more time. Things that I've mentioned that that are flawed about this, even the map itself, when we talk about communities of color, we really must be talking about disadvantaged communities of color, which, for example, let me give you an example. The Sherwood neighborhood is filled with college students, graduate college students. So when we talk about communities of color, if you look at an index map, disadvantaged uh uh index map, you don't see the Sherwood neighborhood. So we really must really look at this. If we're really talking about being equitable, talking about communities of color and disadvantaged people, we really must look at the map and really be attentive and making sure we're not just telling people where they're going. We've heard from uh uh other alders that talked about where people need to go jobs. But have we really had a racial analysis done to actually say and ask people where they need to go versus just telling them where they need to go, communities of color? Not only that, when we talk about it, this is one of the biggest projects in Madison. Why is it that we don't have a racial analysis study done already? So we need to, even though I've advocated for my residents, my constituents over here, and we've done a great job, I'm still worried about uh the entire uh entirety of Madison. So I think we should definitely refer this. There's a lot more que- uh questions to be asked. I have a meeting tomorrow with Justin to actually talk about this more, you know, further as an alder. And I'm very disappointed, I have to say, at this board. This is, this board has made history as far as uh uh, this is the first time an alder was not allowed to speak. So this is a, last week was unbelievable. And also even today, just unbelievable hearing some of these things. So I just wanted to make sure that you guys know that we still to take time to really analyze this and give and look at the feedback that was given last week and really try to be attentive and making sure that these amendments don't have anything to add more to it and making sure that maps are done equitable to this whole city of Madison. And making sure that when we talk about communities of color, we're not just talking about, you know, uh, certain places that uh just community of color without looking at the disadvantaged uh uh communities of color. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Miyaz. Um, as far as this meeting is concerned, I did see your hand up earlier, but it at least on my screen appeared to drop. If hands do come up and drop before I get to a person, I typically do not call on them. I assume they've lowered them intentionally. Um, it's certainly not my intent to ignore anyone. Um, okay. Um, Baltazar, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Thank, thanks, Tom. Uh, so uh, Alder Grandfaster, you can just repeat again a little bit, like what happens if we decide to uh, you know, the refer this to tomorrow's meeting? I just want to make sure that that I am clear with that. And then I have another question.
Yeah, so the um, we are, we, the item was introduced at a previous common council meeting. It was referred to the three meetings that we've taken it up. This is the the third of those three for TTPB. And it uh goes back to the common council meeting tomorrow night. So we don't actually control the trajectory of this item that we, the Transportation Policy and Planning Board, the Common Council retains control of the item. So if tonight, if if here we vote on a referral, what we're really voting on is a recommendation to the Common Council to refer the item back to us as the the policy and planning board. And so tomorrow night at council, this item will be on the agenda. It would come up and it would say the Transportation Policy and Planning Board's recommendation, instead of saying, you know, adopt or reject or do these amendments, would say re-refer to Transportation Policy and Planning Board Meeting of July, whatever it is. And then the council could either vote in favor of that, vote against that, or say, you know what? Okay, we're going to, we're going to take up the the plan and we're going to work through the amendments and we what we don't have the benefit of the, any specific recommendations from the board.
Okay, thank you very much. So that means that if we defer today, then, you know, we might not be able to even go through these amendments uh as well. I I think, you know, from 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 my perspective is uh, you know, and and I recognize all the work that that the city staff has done and, you know, I think it has been very, very tremendous. I think uh last week, uh, public comments were very, very uh powerful and somehow discouraging. Uh, you know, and and I am, I I still go back to 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 that point. I I go back to the point that there was no equity analysis done, you know, I mean, I I as as I was thinking with this and I was trying to figure out how, how should we move forward with this? Uh, it still go back to, uh, you know, and I'm not a planner, I'm not a transit person. Uh, but I still go back to the fact that there was not a, it, I'm trying to understand it that the fact that there was no equity analysis done and something that is going to affect uh our communities, you know, so that's, that's why, you know, I am, I am having a lot of difficulties uh trying to move this forward because of that, you know, and anyway, so I just wanted to to mention that.
Thank you, Baltazar. Um, before I call on the next person, just, there are a lot of alders on the call here. I just want to make sure very clear that alders are welcome to participate in the discussion, the current question on the floor as well, or not to recommend referring this. Um, Daniel, I believe you wanted to respond likely to um Baltazar's comments. Is that correct?
Um, yeah, just uh as a point of fact, um not necessarily related to the decision at hand, but um it is not accurate to say that no equity analysis was done. Um, the equity analysis that's being discussed for, that has not yet been done is specifically the title, the the Title VI analysis, which is something that's required uh by the Federal Transit Administration um in an al- in analyzing a service change before it gets implemented. Um, in the course of developing the alternatives and in the course of developing the draft plan, there were specific analyses done of the impacts of uh the alternatives and of the draft plan on um the number of people who would be near transit and the number of places that people would be able to get to. Uh, by places, yes, the analysis was jobs, as has been mentioned ad nauseam. And those analyses specifically contrasted um the experience of the population in general versus the experience of people of color of her and versus the the experience of people with low incomes. And because of the well-known issues around distribution of disadvantaged communities of color versus people of color in general um and what low income means and the interference of the university in that data, there were also maps provided that very specifically showed the areas where people would be more and less disadvantaged. Um, in addition to the data that was provided initially in this study in the Choices Report that showed the general distributions of people of different um racial groups and different income levels uh within Madison. So um I, just as a matter of fact, I want to make it clear that there ha- that there has been analysis that Um I, just as a matter of fact, I wanna make it clear that there ha- that there has been analysis that addresses equity issues. Uh throughout the work of this project, there has not yet been the Title VI analysis. And the reason for that is, as Justin mentioned earlier, um that analysis specifically. That analysis has to um actually uh address a network. That's being proposed for implementation, right? The draft plan was a draft that was put out there for comment with the knowledge that of course there would be comments and of course there would be changes. And so the process, the point of the process where um the city finds itself now is, okay, so. Various changes have been proposed, which ones should we incorporate? And that the moment when that becomes clear, when there is a recommendation. Um from this board to move forward and from the council to to go ahead. Then there will be something upon which the regulatory Title VI analysis um can be performed. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel, for that clarification. Um Alder Abbas, you're up next, please go ahead.
Thank you so much. First of all, first of all, I will say thank you all of you for your service. As a resident volunteer committee members, it's a lot on your plate. Want to discuss about really impactful the scene here, which will impact many people's life individually and also um. Across the Madison, especially people, handicapped, disabled, low-income families, which rely on this transportation. But let's come to the point about this motion. To me personally, last three, four years, my experience as a former council president. I do not see a reason, again, nobody can predict common council, uh but I do not. Not see any personal reason where a lead committee like Plan Commission, Park Commission, you as a board. Decide to refer as a recommended action and council say, no, we don't want to refer it, we want to debate on the floor, I highly unlikely see that happening. That's number one clarity I want to give. I I agree what the process Alder Foster mentioned is clear, what he is, what he's saying. But I want to also add that, that council respect our committee's process. Council listen our committees, community listen our committees, and if the lead committee is saying. We need time to to give people more time or either on equity analyses or either other questions. The council will say, no, we're not gonna give the time, I don't think so, council. And tomorrow meeting, let's say another thing is, let's say you make some recommendation today, A, B, C, move this, approve that. Tomorrow, if an alder wants to make a recommendation. Then order doesn't have also amendment, then order doesn't have any time to do it, within. I I mean, this meeting might go until midnight or two AM, who knows. Um I do think so Margaret does have merit in her motion and her justification, I heard. Uh Commissioner Baltasar, he also had a merit in his point, I also hear from the staff too. Like their concerns are, but if it delays six weeks, so what? And I'm sorry to say, so what? For the public betterment, it's for public input, and that's what our job is, and and it have a huge, it's not like a real estate development project outside my house. Four unit, four-story or five-story and you can delay and you can, this is, people's life matter on transportation, and I. And I, I just want to say that I won't say. How you want to take this, this is your as a commission, committee decision, I won't say to my fellow, you know. I respect you all, I want you guys. To make your own decision, doesn't want influence, I don't want to say you vote A or B, but I just want to give the input. Uh how I I am listening as elected official and I do see some merit in that motion. Thank you all.
Thank you, Alder Abbas. Uh Randy, you're up next, go ahead, please.
Thank you for the comments, uh Alder Abbas. Um as the the council president for uh Pittsburgh. Uh there's a number of amendments before us and the common council. Several weeks ago voted in favor of all of them unanimously, the ones that affect Pittsburgh. With some adjustments, and that's why those amendments are before us now. Um. Up until this evening, I thought we were all on the same page. Um I shouldn't say this evening, but until maybe last week, but I I I received a number of calls over the weekend for constituents, primarily Southdale. And. They a lot of concerns, not necessarily what we proposed and we voted on it, and that's what they were. Uh looking for, it was a a an improvement, big improvement to what was offered. Uh that particular community, neighborhood of maybe twelve hundred residents were completely discounted. And. Um granted. Madison staff, Mike, Justin, you've done a great job of, I'll say, pulling this together at the last minute. Um I said, not, it's not that it wasn't planned, it's just that it really was brought to our attention, Pittsburgh, when we did one of our outreach programs. For the town of Madison being absorbed in Pittsburgh, and you did an outstanding job. Uh it's just, I think there's some real concerns with. Um. A lot of unanswered questions and how this is really going to impact them and others and um. I I would, I I definitely think we need some additional time for those questions to be asked and to be answered, so. Um. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Um Alder Carter, you're up next, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say, uh and and everyone has has basically. Touched on 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 my perspective, I am in support of Margaret's motion. I I just wanna say there are a few things that um. I didn't see get addressed. Um the Bridge Lake Point, Winona neighborhood. Um having the bust on West Broadway, which is a heavily fast-moving street. Um really looking at that, I'm really looking at um the Indian Springs, Moreland, uh Rim Rock area. I think that um. Another six weeks, according to uh President Furman, when your next meeting is. Will give time to really explain, number one. These amendments in a way to get buy-in, because right now, there is no buy-in from the public. Right now, they are fearful that if this passes. And there's no service after eleven, for those that might get off at twelve. How does that financially impact them? There is that concern, because it's more than. My district, which of course I'm advocating for, but it's the whole city and how this um. Gets you to to point A, B, C, and D. And this is where we need the time to explain it. And we always talk about explaining things after we approve them. But sometimes we lose that momentum after we approve them. Sometimes that makes people say they're not gonna do anything, so let me go here, there, and everywhere. So I do uh support Margaret. I think that a soft launch can be postponed to uh to January if need be. Um I think that we have to really think bigger and broader when it comes to redesigning. The city's. Transportation and who does it affect and who does it not affect? And I could go back to, not that I was an alder, but I could go back to telling you. Everything that went wrong with the transfer points that was going to be corrected. And as of today. Has not been corrected. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Alder Carter. Um Alder Evers, go ahead, please.
Uh thanks, Chair. I came to this meeting prepared to ask questions of staff. Regarding uh the difference between four D and four E and why staff are recommending four D as opposed to four E. I feel that this, the timing for this motion is actually inappropriate. I don't know why staff has not been given an opportunity to answer questions about the amendments. And then if you feel like you don't have enough information or if there there are questions or problems, that time make a referral. But why short-circuit what everybody was expecting to have happen tonight, which is a discussion about the amendments? To allow staff to justify their recommendations, to answer pointed questions, tough questions. And then if you don't feel like you can make a a recommendation or a vote, then do a referral. But we spent over an hour right now discussing whether to refer. With all due respect, I think the timing of that motion was inappropriate. And you should have done what was on the agenda, which was to give staff an opportunity. To answer direct questions about the amendments, that's why I thought we were having this meeting tonight. I encourage you to vote against this particular motion, but then reconsider it uh after looking. At the the amendments and then decide whether you can make a vote or whether you need more time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Evers. Alder Paulson, you're up next, go ahead, please.
Uh hi, um so first off, thank you all for your work on this over the past uh uh. Many, many months and years, uh and I apologize for being one of the offenders here and submitting um. An entirely brand-new route um it with with a couple days to go, um which which I appreciate is. Both a challenge for you to take up, but I hope you appreciate that, as I'm new to the council, um I didn't have any other opportunities to to get anything in earlier. Um I'm not gonna take a position on uh should you uh ask for more time um or or not, I'll leave that to to this body. My request to this body, and this is probably needs some clarification from from, you know, either Chair Wilson uh or Alder Foster or maybe the city attorney. Uh if this is possible, but uh what I hope you will do tonight is maybe put this uh uh, put this motion on the table for a little bit. And then go through and try to work through some of the amendments um to to collapse some of those down. Uh because I think if you are gonna go back to the public, as best as possible, it would be nice to have a map with. Um as many of these amendments adopted and and folded in, it's tough, it's. Uh people say that the current map is hard to read, it's even harder to read when there's the draft plan plus a list of eighteen possible amendments. Um and I think you have a lot of amendments before you that, a bunch of them you're you're for sure gonna adopt. Uh and a bunch of options which uh you're gonna pick one of, and I think you're gonna find uh one of them, so I think you could um. I think you could and you should take as many of those amendments up tonight to try and co- uh give some additional direction and maybe um. In in ideal world, there would be one map coming out of this tonight that the council looks at, uh either. To discuss tomorrow and adopt, uh or if it's gonna get referred for more discussion, it'd be nice to have one um. One mapped with with all the amendments uh basically considered and and folded in um uh to make uh community discussion a lot easier, so. Um I would uh. Let uh the chair of the city attorney come up with the right motion for this, but but my suggestion would be for you to lay this uh motion. Uh this motion to make a referral recommendation on the table for a while and work through all the other amendments, so. Uh so these, this, these maps are easier to read um uh going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Paulson. Um Aldra Figuracol, you're up next, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Chair. Um I I totally agree with Alder Paulson and Alder Evers. I mean, let's review the the amendments, like let's go through it, staff already packaged them in a way that um. That will make it less difficult to handle. Um and at the end of the day, if this is not what, if you still need more time, then propose a referral time to the council. Um I do resent a little bit of having other um. Peers speak on my behalf when it comes to council decisions. The only certain thing here that we have is that we don't know what the council is going to decide tomorrow. I would rather make my decision based on the expertise and knowledge of this committee. But at the same time, that is a decision for me to make tomorrow, so it will be easier um to be able to use the knowledge from staff and from each of you. To uh make, to make my final decision. But at this point, um I I really, I mean, I have been looking forward to these amendments for months. And I'm gonna actually say here, because it's been, this has been going on since before I even started, I've been following this project, so um. As now that I have done my homework and I really, I I appreciate how the people are trying to get caught up, I understand how busy we get. But I also would like to see. Further discussion on these recommendations. I I think, you know, some of us are prepared to go and I I would appreciate um that that is also respected, so. Again, review the, I I will suggest review each amendment and then um. Um make a decision at the end if you want to still um make a request, a a. An extension. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Figuracol. Um Alder Bahelai, uh go ahead, please.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you everyone for your continuous work and especially the city staff. Justin, Mark, and everyone else, I know you have really worked so hard in this project. Uh I think many things have been said and I really support, you know, some of the amendments and it's just me. And, you know, when we talk about the community, uh you know, Alder um Evers and Alder Figuracol. And suggested that, you know, we can have some suggested uh amendment. But how can we have an amendment that is not supportive of the community? So all the uh other alders, what they are saying is, let's have some kind of uh. Uh education uh for for the community so that we can have the buy-in. We can be able to communicate with them in a way that's so meaningful for them to make a decision, because this is not just a project. For just one uh uh district, it's the whole city of Madison will be uh involved and will be uh affected. And thirdly, you know, what are we sending out to our community? Partnership is very critical to the work that we do in the city. So even though, you know, I support some of the amendment, I really, really appreciate. The work that has been done uh through Justin and and Mike. Uh I think it's just a few weeks and I, like, you know, Alder Paulson said. I'm not saying that whether you refer it or you uh decide it, but I think there's a a way to think about. What we can do in the next six weeks, you know, if we have uh decide to make those amendments. And it's not supported by the community, then we have to reverse the decision that has been made. So I think, you know, I I'm just here to acknowledge the work the committee has done. And also the city staff has done, and I'm really grateful for and appreciative of all of you, so thank you.
Thank you, Alder Bahelai. Um Alder Miazzi, go ahead, please.
Oh, I'm not gonna delay this, this, same thing, and said the same thing over and over again, but basically. I just wanted to say that I definitely um, it's not, everybody knows that transportation has been a problem in Madison. I understand and I definitely uh uh give kudos to staff, Justin and Mike that's done a lot, you know, when I first was alder. Uh Mike came out and gave a great presentation. But I am just concerned about the process and making sure that a racial analysis is done. If this was done at the beginning of racial analysis study, wouldn't I, I wouldn't be having to fight so hard to making sure that uh um. That there's transportation to get to Mendota Mental Health, or mental health is such a big issue. Shouldn't be fighting to make sure that there's equity as far as routes getting to Pick and Save and Woodman's. So there's clearly equity, uh racial equity uh. Uh analysis has not been done, so it should definitely be done. To rush this is definitely a mistake, I can understand that everybody's here to look at the amendments. And we can definitely look at the amendments, but at the end of the day, when you have alders that are of color. Let me say this specifically, when you have alders of color. Saying that this needs to be ho- held up. When you have the alder of the district saying that this needs to be, that she needs more information. This is a slap in the face that we cannot honor that. When we talk about equity, when we talk about alders that have been doing the job for a long time, so we definitely need to make sure that this is done right. And I agree, we wanna look at the the amendments to to push this forward in order to get a better service, but it's the end of the day, we should still make sure we have. More input from the people that elected us. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Miazzi. Alder Bob, Henry McKinnon, go ahead, please.
Uh thank you, Chair. Um I am still.
Um, I am still supporting, um, the referral and, um, for these reasons. One, community trust. Two, community voice. Three, that they have been heard. And finally, we will not control the hearing, um, and, and listening to their voices. It does not control the outcome. It does say that we heard them and there will be trade-offs. We heard that and everybody's not going to get what they want. But absolutely, we always encourage the community to come and give voice. And in this situation with such a huge project, the fact that we are allowing a pause does not stop the need for the overhaul in the transit system. We all agree with that. Uh, but, um, what, what we're saying is, is that moving forward to have such an enormous concern of the, the public comments last week, um, or, uh, that, yeah, last week, I mean, they were tremendous. They were huge and, and left much to be considered. And also it came from communities that felt that they were left out. So I am supporting, um, the referral and as some of the alders has moved forward, we can make a decision. That's the problem. That's why the community has, uh, lost trust in us because there is a sense of they are not heard. The decision is already made, uh, and their voices are not valid. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney. Alder Paulson, go ahead, please.
So I just wanted to ask a procedural question, which is sort of came up in my, my previous comments, but I actually do just want to, uh, put a process question before, uh, you. Who is in control? What's the current status of the draft plan? Where does that sit in sort of the draft plan as an artifact? And if there are, um, um, I think Justin presented, there is a couple of, of, of kind of what he thinks will be non-controversial amendments. I think he's probably right. Is there a way tonight for you to adopt those, um, without necessarily, and also potentially make the motion to refer? So can you, can you, um, in this meeting, go through several of the amendments and adopt them and sort of delete draft one of the plan and go up with draft two of the plan, um, that could move forward? So a number of these amendments can sort of be, you know, just, uh, pasted into the document and, and, uh, and accepted and moved on? Or is that, or is this, uh, draft plan not under the control of this council, this committee? And that can only be done by the common council? So the only thing that, um, this committee can do is can make recommendations to the council. So I just, I'm just trying to figure out, um, even if the committee, uh, even if the process that plays out over the next two nights is, um, we're going to delay and go back and, and take this up six weeks from now, is there a way to at least, um, reduce the, the number of amendments that are sort of floating around so it's easier to, you know, can we get to sort of one map with like, here's all the recommended, uh, amendments that have been adopted thus far? And for the next six weeks, we're going to discuss making, um, you know, either discuss and clarify questions about what's on this one or, um, make additional amendments. So I hope that makes sense and I apologize if it doesn't, but I would really like to try. If there's a way to get to one map at the end of this, that's what I was hoping to get to.
Thank you, Alder Paulson. I think it does make sense and I think a few others have hinted at, at what you're getting at there as well. Um, I believe that the first item of business for us to do is to handle the motion that is on the floor, that is whether or not to refer. What happens after that, depending on the outcome, um, I think may be a better question for staff about how it proceeds. So assuming that we, if we, if we vote yes to refer, then that would, in my understanding, end the discussion for the evening, we'd move on to the next item on our agenda. If it was voted down, um, we would, uh, we could proceed as planned on the agenda with going through the amendments or we could, um, potentially, and this is maybe where the city attorney could weigh in or another member of staff, is there a, is there a mechanism for us to, um, get at what Alder Paulson was, was suggesting?
Is that a question for me?
I, I think so, yeah. Do you have any suggestions about how we would proceed, assuming that we did not refer tonight?
The, the, the motion to refer is a procedural motion. Uh, you have to deal with that before you could go back and do amendments. You can't place a referral motion on the table. What you'd have to do is deal with it and then somebody would have to make another motion to refer later on.
Thank you. Alder Paulson, I still see your hand up. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, and it's my mistake for not lowering my hand. I apologize.
Okay, no worries. All right.
Call for the question.
Okay, the question has been called. On the motion to...
No.
Sorry, go ahead.
I mean, if you call a question, then we have to vote on calling the question. Attorney Brist can, this is just going to become even more absurd, but maybe the attorney can provide guidance now.
You're, you're correct. A, a motion to call the question is either unanimous consent request that everybody has to agree to automatically. If anybody objects to call the question, you have to have a motion to, to come to an immediate vote. And, um, um, I don't see where it's, where a procedural motion, you should just deal with the procedural motion and, and get it over with and decide one way or the other. Then you can go and talk about the substance of the motion or move on.
Okay, so Alder Harrington McKinney, do you still want to proceed with?
What we're doing, what we're doing is we are, um, each speaking multiple times, multiple times, um, supporting, uh, whether this should be referred or not. And the question is, is that, uh, whether the motion as put forward will be moved forward.
Is there an objection to calling the question? Okay, seeing no objections to calling the question, I will assume unanimous consent. Um, so we will come to a vote. Attorney Brist, is that correct?
Yes.
Is that done correctly? Thank you. On the motion to refer this item to, or to recommend referral of this item back to Transportation Policy and Planning Board, um, at our next meeting, I believe that is correct in wording. We will do a roll call vote. An a vote will be in favor of referral. A no vote will be in opposition to referral. If your clerk would please call the roll. And please save my name for last as I would not vote to clear the motion supply.
Okay. Fajrinas Lencala.
Audrey's not in voting status at this time.
Oh, I'm sorry. Faltazar Leada Santana.
Aye.
Barbara Harrington McKinney.
Aye.
Carolyn McAndrews.
No.
Christopher McAhill. Grant Foster.
No.
Keith Furman.
No.
Margaret Bergamini. Pass. Randy Udell.
Aye.
Thomas Wilson.
There is not a tie. I have four noes and three ayes. The chair can, um, I'm sorry, Margaret, go ahead.
Yes, and, and I passed assuming that I could, uh, come back and vote.
Yes, go ahead.
So I will put you in the unfortunate position of breaking the tie. I will vote yes.
Okay, the chair votes no, the motion fails. All right. Margaret, I still see your hand up. Go ahead. Alder Furman, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move a motion that we adopt the draft plan to include amendments one, three C, seven, eight, ten, eleven A, and twelve. And these are considered the non-convertio, converse, conversial amendments, sorry. And if staff can bring up the spreadsheet, we can start discussing amendments, but that, this was that, that was the first block.
Thank you for that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, there is a second. Um, all right, Alder Furman, we'd like to continue, um, to discuss your motion.
Sure. So I mean, I think, you know, um, you know, uh, whether we decide as a group that we're going to ask for referral of, um, this, uh, an amended, um, draft plan, we can certainly consider that, but, um, since the referral failed, I think it's time for us to start looking at the amendments and seeing what's next. And this is the, the, these, these are the easy ones. Uh, one, three C, seven, eight, ten, eleven A, and twelve.
All right, there is a motion and there has been a second. Is there any discussion? Chris, go ahead, please.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I did have a question for staff, if they could discuss a little more. Three C, which is the option that removes the crossover, um, at, on East Wash. I know that there's a lot of support for this and, um, a lot of reasons this seems like a good idea. Um, in looking at it, um, it does sort of eliminate a lot of key touchpoints moving sort of north, south, um, along the east, most. I wonder if someone could speak to that a little bit?
Sure, I can speak to that. Uh, would you like to see the amendment or do you?
Yeah, actually, since you're prepared that, um, full version, if you have that, that would be great.
Sure. Go to the top. Okay, so, um, uh, the original intent with the, the First Street crossover, as you probably know, was to provide connections between routes A, B, C, and D at First Street and East Washington. So the reason that we started looking at alternatives to that was we, we were looking at that, uh, that intersection and looking at where the bus stops would go and how we could have bus stops that could handle volumes of people and how they would be crossing the street, what we could be doing to make that crossing better. Um, as you also probably know, it's a very busy, uh, intersection. And so we, we came up with some ideas, but none of them were great. Um, none of them were easy. Uh, we also tested those turn maneuvers with a bus. And again, uh, there were several that were sort of, uh, not great, uh, particularly between First Street and Fordham Avenue, which is the street that continues to, towards Sherman. This, this, uh, this northbound to northbound movement from First Street to Johnson to Sherman was poor. It did not work. Um, you know, we could have made some, some, uh, changes that would have helped it, uh, but it would have involved eliminating the southbound bike lane and things like that. Uh, we also started thinking about Route X and Route D2 and how, you know, it seemed like Route X would probably go away and how, you know, if you're coming down southbound on Sherman and Fordham, you know, you'd sort of expect, uh, a kind of a direct trip into town and, you know, then you'd make the west, the, the southbound left onto Johnson and First. Uh, besides that being very cumbersome and time consuming, you'd also be crossing the railroad twice. And so there's a pretty decent chance that you'd be stopped for a train when your desire path really isn't across the train track. So we just felt like there would be a lot of, uh, confusion and frustration with that. Um, we, we also heard some complaints, uh, from the Atwood, uh, area, uh, from, uh, people wanting, uh, you know, more direct access towards the downtown area. Uh, so overall, we just wanted to give the option to kind of prioritize the, the faster and more direct service, uh, without having to deal with some of those, uh, uh, problems at that, at that intersection. Um, I mean, overall, we just felt that it probably wouldn't be a great long-term solution. In some ways, you're recreating the north and east transfer points and, uh, putting them in the middle of one of the busiest intersections in Madison. Be straightforward.
Uh, thanks. Um, I've thought about this one a lot and it was helpful to hear some of those other logistical things that aren't obvious.
All right, thank you. Additional questions or discussion? Okay, on the motion to recommend adoption of amendments one, three C, seven, eight, ten, I'm sorry, Alder Paulson, go ahead.
Sorry, I just want to clarify that, uh, you'll be coming to the other amendments for discussion too, because the amendment I heard from Alder Foster was adopting, adopt the plan and then those amendments.
So we'll, we're going through, yeah, we'll go through the list of amendments. Um, yeah, so we'll go to the next, we'll go to the fifth, fifth group next and then we'll go down to the individual ones that are a little bit more.
All right, thank you. I'm just, just making sure. Sorry for the...
No worries, no worries. Um, Aldra Figueroa Cole, go ahead, please. Aldra Figueroa Cole, I see your hand up.
Sorry, I, I muted, I don't mute myself, I'll mute it again. Um, so I see there's a total net cost on the tab, but I am assuming that's for the entire spreadsheet. Is there a summary for this section on the cost, the session that we're discussing?
Justin, that's...
This, this section is net cost is zero.
Thank you, Justin. That's all I got, no, no.
Sorry, Alder, I still see your hand. Okay, good. All right, any further questions or discussion before we come to a vote on the motion, the current motion? Okay, seeing none. On the motion to recommend adoption of amendments one, three C, seven, eight, ten, eleven A, and twelve, I believe those are all correct. All those in favor, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Oppose no?
Abstain.
Chair believes it, um, is, um, we have, what is it? Seven ayes, one abstention? Or is it? Eight ayes, one abstention? Um, motion carries? Alder Furman, go ahead, please.
So now we have an amended plan. I'd like to move a motion to amend that plan further by adopting amendments thirteen, fifteen, sixteen C, and seventeen A. Uh, these amendments were the ones approved by the Fitchburg Common Council.
Thank you, Alder. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Alder Furman, would you like to speak further to your motion?
Um, I, that, uh, again, this is hopefully, um, uh, stuff we can, um, talk about, but, um, this is a bundle, that's the Fitchburg amendments. Um, we have, obviously have, um, Randy Udell here who could possibly speak to it more, um, but hopefully this is, uh, not too complicated. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Go ahead, please.
Uh, thank you. Justin, would you be able to mark these as yes so that we can see the impact, financial impact if the result of the vote is yes? Thank you.
All right, uh, Randy, I believe you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Uh, I can speak to thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen C and seventeen A, the Fitchburg amendments. Fitchburg City Council took all of these amendments on the 24th of May, if I'm correct. And, um, we voted unanimously to support all of these amendments and, uh, with the additional cost adjustments. I mean, I can speak in detail if you, if you would like, but sixteen C is the South Dale. Yeah, I spoke to it earlier. Um, but if, unless there's specific questions, I'll, I'll move forward.
Thank you, Randy. All right, um, Aldra Figueroa Cole, go ahead, please.
Um, for, for the sixteen, which, which we had gotten some communication via mail, but can staff please go over it and, uh, once again with the picture up, please? What the recommendation is? Thank you.
You're with me? This is sixteen, C. If you wanted to see any others, let me know.
Can you please go over it, um, what the changes were and what I see, but yeah, just cover it.
Uh, sure, yeah, I'll, oh, yeah, I'm happy to go over this again. Uh, so in the draft plan, Route G, uh, this is Moreland. So Route G comes west along Moreland and then goes directly up Rimrock towards Badger Road. Uh, the Southdale neighborhood is generally, uh, right here, a few blocks west of Rimrock. And so we looked at various ways to uh, shift the service west to provide more coverage in that neighborhood. Sixteen, C is the one that provides the most coverage in the Southdale neighborhood. This is the one that was recommended by the Fitchburg City Council. Uh, it, so it's on, uh, it goes, it does a loop in both directions via Badger, Pheasant Ridge, Deer Valley, Ski Lane, and, uh, Novation Parkway. It's the same as Route 16 is today with one exception. Route 16 goes down Ski Lane and then up Rimrock instead of using Novation Parkway. Uh, now, part of the reason for that is that when Route 16 was implemented and for many years, this Novation Parkway route did not exist. And, um, so that, that route is, is better, uh, for Metro because it provides a signalized crossing of Rimrock. Uh, so that's sort of u- using a new, uh, completed street. Uh, but other than that, it provides service to, to basically all of the bus stops that are currently served with by Route 16, with the exception of a few on Rimrock. Um, and there would be a new set of stops on Novation that would be essentially parallel to the stops that, that would be, that are currently on Rimrock. And if you need any more detail about that or information, just let me know.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, Chris, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Thanks. Um, I just wanted to, um, I guess, so my understanding is staff recommends these more or less because Fitchburg, um, approved them and we're being good neighbors. Um, I guess I just wanted to throw out there that, um, when it comes to seventeen, A, um, which is the, you can probably put it up. Um, I think that, um, if this were in Madison, I, there's a good chance I would, I would not want to approve this one. Um, for the precedent that it would set, I think, you know, basically what it's doing is serving a brand new community that's pretty disconnected, um, from the rest of the system. Um, and doesn't really create any equity concerns as far as I, I, I can tell. So for what it's worth, um, just throwing that out there, getting it on the record, I guess.
Thank you, Chris. Um, Randy, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Um, I, I think, Chris, I, I respect your, your thought, but I think, at least in Fitchburg, we were, I think the thought was because it was a new community and we were hoping that, uh, not hoping, but, uh, just because of it being a, a smart code development and transit is encouraged with smart code. So, uh, this would bring the service into Fitchburg, they would take it back out and into Madison and the Sramby area. Uh, but I think that was the thought behind it. Um, but Fitchburg is in support of the, uh, the route and with the adjusted cost.
Thank you, Randy. Um, Alder Figueroa call, go ahead, please.
And again, so this one is, will be covered by Fitchburg and when, um, Alder Foster asks for the values to be updated, a value change. So which, which cost from Fitchburg are we incurring on these routes?
So I, I can take that one. The, um, there would be actually a s- very slight decrease in cost for the city of Madison. And, and a lot of that's just in the way that some of these routes are shifted i- i- into different jurisdictions. Um, primarily the allied drive area, you know, shifting that, you know, a couple of blocks from Madison into Fitchburg shifts some of the cost, um, from Madison to Fitchburg.
Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion on this motion? Margaret, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I just want to express thanks to the board in Fitchburg for expanding their commitment and contribution to public transit, something that I know a lot of citizens there have been working for, for many years and, uh, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Margaret. Is there any, are there any further questions or discussion before we come to a vote on this motion? Seeing none, um, on the emotion, on the motion to recommend adoption of amendments thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, C, and seventeen, A. All those in favor of recommending adoption, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Any abstentions? Chair believes it's unanimous. If you'd like to register a no vote or an abstention, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised. Seeing no hands raised, that look good on us unanimous. Thank you. Okay, Alder Furman.
So if we're, if we're looking at this spreadsheet, it looks like four is next. I'd actually like to wait on four and then try to see if we can get some of the other easier ones. I think four is going to probably generate a nice amount of discussion. And so I'd like to make a motion that we amend, um, the amended draft plan to include amendment five.
Thank you, Alder Furman. Is there a second? It's like Alder Foster's second. Um, Alder Furman, do you want to speak further to your motion?
Um, this is a staff recommended amendment and I'd like staff to talk about it a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, amendment five, uh, this deals with, uh, uh, complaints that, uh, discussions that we had earlier on in, in the project, which is why it has a higher number, or a, sorry, a lower number on it. Uh, the specific complaint was about people specifically in the West Moreland neighborhood, uh, generally east of Midvale, I'm going to say south of Mineral Point, north of Odana, that, that general area. Uh, a concern that they would, uh, no longer have access to all-day bus service. And, and so that upgraded Route X from what was at that time or, or in the draft plan, a peak-only route to an all-day route, giving them hourly service, um, that would be available all day, uh, which, you know, uh, given. So, uh, the other issue is, is Odana Road, uh, was left without all-day service. Um, so there are some destinations along Odana, uh, just, just kind of talking, thinking back to our discussion about how, uh, where people are going. Um, uh, there are a fair number of, uh, jobs and also other destinations on Odana. Uh, especially there's a social security office there, um, a few other points of interest, uh, some kind of redeveloping, uh, areas. And so we felt that having all-day service on Odana Road, that section of Odana Road, uh, west of Whitney and east of, uh, Gammon. Uh, between those two things, uh, we, we, those two areas, uh, we felt it was probably appropriate to have all-day service on that route. Again, kind of adjusting from the ridership route, the ridership model to a, a, a more of a uh, uh, in-between model. Um, you know, that's, it's not really a ridership route, um, but there are enough destinations and enough, uh, people served that we, we felt it was uh, worthy of a discussion. Um, uh, so there's, there's one other minor change here in that in the draft plan, the peak-only route X uses, uh, Tokay west of Whitney, uh, going past what's now the West Transfer Point. So we felt that that was appropriate for an, a peak-only route that's trying to express people into town as fast as possible. But if it's going to an all-day route where it's providing coverage throughout the day, we wanted it to, uh, line up on Whitney with the other routes to provide better transfers with those routes. Um, and, and, uh, you know, form a, a better network there. It also increases service on Tokay slightly. So one of the things that we're, we heard was, uh, co- uh, complaints of, that there wasn't enough service in this general area, specifically south of Tokay near Odana. And so while we, we weren't able to provide, uh, service on Odana west of Midvale in the new model, uh, we, we did think that it would partially help to improve service on Tokay with another route that we could hopefully kind of synchronize those schedules so that there could be, uh, three buses an hour as opposed to two. Um, and so I think that was, that was kind of the, the, the general thought process. This is a amendment that carries staff recommendation. It does have a budget impact. Again, if there are any other, uh, details you'd like us to discuss, I'm happy to do that.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none. On the motion to adopt amendment five, all those in favor of recommending adoption, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Any abstentions? If you'd like to register a no vote or an abstention, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, a look good on us unanimous. Thank you. Alder Furman, go ahead, please.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, I would like to amend the amended draft plan to include amendment six, A, with the portion into Middleton, conditional, uh, conditionally approved upon, uh, uh, approval by the Madison, the Middleton Council. So, again, that's six, A, with the portion into Middleton, conditionally approved upon approval by the Middleton Council.
Thank you, Alder. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Alder Furman, do you want to speak further to your motion?
Um, no, I, I, as, as much as I appreciate the, the long, um, and, and detailed explanation on five, I'm not sure we need that on six, A. But, um, if somebody has a question of staff and wants that, they can certainly ask. Um, this is something that is, um, incredibly important to, uh, residents in my area. Um, and I do appreciate, uh, the work that staff put into, uh, this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Furman. Alder Figueroa call, go ahead, please.
Again, the same question, what is the impact on, on the cost coverage for Middleton versus Madison? Staff can elaborate, elaborate on that and rate.
Sure. So, uh, the majority of the cost is, uh, a cost to Madison of upgrading Route R, uh, or, uh, replacing Route H with Route R. Um, and mo- about half of Route Y is also in Madison. So it's only the half of Route Y that wasn't already budgeted for the rush hour only Route Y. So it's just, just those times of day, what, that the Route Y would now run being all day. Uh, and just the half of it that's in Middleton is, is the Middleton cost. That's estimated at a hundred and ninety thousand there for Middleton. Uh, and then a six hundred and eighty for Madison for a total of eight seventy.
And, and if I could add, just on the Middleton piece, um, so there is a, um, but actually Fitchburg did it this past year, um, but there's a way to change allocations in how the state funding comes through. Um, that if they make that switch, um, then they would be consistent with all of our other city partners. Um, but they would also generate some additional state funding which would offset this expense. And so, um, even though their cost is going up by a hundred and ninety thousand, their, their net out-of-pocket cost would be essentially unchanged if they make that change.
And just, just one other thing if I could add was, because this is a, a, a Madison board. Our, uh, discussions, uh, with Middleton and the community meetings in Middleton, uh, most of the discussion was around Route Y, particularly a couple areas, the south, South Ridge, uh, Highway Q, Century Avenue, that, that area, which would not be served by Route F, kind of the central parts of University Avenue. And, uh, that's the areas on Park Street and Middleton, kind of between University Avenue and Middleton and Gammon Road. Uh, so that was kind of, kind of central to our, our discussions in Middleton. Responding directly to that.
Thank you.
All right. Any further questions or discussion? Alder, I still, I see your hand up still. I imagine it just didn't get taken down, but I want to make sure that there are no further questions or discussion. Okay. Then on the motion to recommend adoption of amendment six, A, all those in favor of, of recommending adoption, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Any abstentions? If you'd like to register a no vote or abstention, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, Chair believes it's unanimous. Thank you. Alder Furman, go ahead, please.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I would like to amend the amended plan, um, to include amendment nine.
This is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Margaret. Thank you. Alder Furman, do you want to speak further to your motion?
Um, this, a staff recommendation, if, uh, people want further discussion, I'm sure, uh, just ask staff and, uh, we can get, um, uh, more on it. Um, and, uh, I know Alder Figueroa Cole keeps asking about costs, so, um, I think that's, uh, up on the screen now. It shows us as a Madison cost, um, of, uh, a million dollars.
They're jumping around a bit on me here. All right, thank you, Alder Furman. Um, Margaret, you're up first. Go ahead, please.
Uh, two quick questions of staff. Um, I just want to make sure that this addresses the concerns people had about actually being able to get close to the entrance of the Pick and Save, well, what do they call it? The Pick and Save Grocery on Aberg. And I, I believe it does, but I, I just want to make certain of that on the map and, cause my vision isn't that great. Um, and all, uh, ditto for Dryden Terrace.
Yeah, so Mike's pulling this up, but the answer is yes to both. Um, it would pull into the Pick and Save parking lot and it would also, um, uh, pull a- around, um, to touch Dryden Terrace.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, Alder Figueroa Cole, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Yes, I mean, I, I had a similar question on Margaret, because this is another one that has come up to, to our attention often, so I am sorry to, to ask, but can, can you just run us through the, through the route one more time so people can see what the changes were and what is covered?
Sure, I think it's worth the time. Uh, this is, uh, this is one we spent quite a bit of time on. Uh, so, uh, this addresses several shortcomings of the draft plan. One is providing all-day service north of Northport. Uh, so Route L starts there, doing the loop around Wheeler and Delaware, and then coming down Sherman Avenue and doing a quick dodge over to, uh, Dryden Drive to serve Dryden Terrace Apartments. Uh, we met with those folks and one of the main concerns was walking down the hill. There's a, there's a hill between, um, uh, London Dairy Drive and Northport. Uh, London Dairy is just north of Northport. It's, it's a relatively short distance, but there's a hill. Uh, there are a number of people with disabilities, uh, living there. Uh, so our goal was to, um, get the service to. get the service to Dryden and London Dairy so that they would not have to walk down the hill. The next issue we spent quite a bit of time on was the Pick 'n Save. This is Shopko Drive. It's a, the Shopko store is, is gone. But, but so then it, it comes over on Aberg to serve the Pick 'n Save on Shopko Drive Avenue or something. And then the next issue was in, during this process, the city decided in looking for a place for a new men's homeless shelter, looked for a spot here near Kinsman and Stoughton Road. So we had a desire to serve that area. Unfortunately, that area is kind of right in between two BRT stations. You don't really have a good way to serve it with BRT. We also wanted to serve some destinations near Wright and Kinsman that are currently served by Route Six. So the desire was to push service a little bit farther north there. And then going south, we also had a desire to connect La Follette High School with Owl Creek. That, that direct connection was a very high priority for the school district as well as the NRT, the Neighborhood Resource Team. So we were able to do that. And then the reason that we connected that into one route was that it's convenient to then make this connection with, which connects all of those things and all of those destinations with several other routes and other destinations, including the Walmarts just north of Highway 30, the Woodmans on Milwaukee Street, and several other destinations and other routes, including Route G, Route D1, and Route C. This undoes a number of branches that Route C does. So we had some branching of Route C that would, would come, come here on the southeast side. And so what we've decided to do is instead use this C2 branch, which is now free to go farther east. And we also had a desire to serve Buckeye east of the interstate. There's a fair amount of new density out there near Kingsmill Way. Because we didn't hear a lot about that, but we did hear some desire to do that. So we were able to do that with the, the branch of C2. And then one other possible advantage to this is that it leaves some capacity in this Route C to shoot another branch towards Manona. So we feel that this route would accomplish a lot of what we were asked to do, a lot of the shortcomings of the draft plan. And it makes everything fit together a little bit better than the draft plan did with the, the way the Route C worked. It would be essentially two buses cycling as fast as the routes would allow. And so the service would be roughly once an hour.
Thank you. I mean, I really want to point out this one because I know all the, the feedbacks that we received and how hard, this is just, this is just exemplifies what the whole process has been. Feedback has been provided, outreach has been done. I mean, I know that every single email that I had gotten, that I have forward has been addressed. And this is one that really picked my, my attention when it came, even though it's not in my district. And I know that staff addressed it and, and this is, this is what it looks like at the end. So I appreciate taking the time to explain it.
All right. Thank you. Alder Hengton McKenney, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Chair. I also wanted to acknowledge the work that staff has done. Certainly this is not my area, but speaking to the connection between La Follette High School and Owl Creek area. And so could you just speak a little bit about that diversity issue and what you looked at in terms of density and making this a priority? I think it's good to, to have that spoken into the record.
Sure. Yeah. I think this is an example of an area that would probably not be served in a pure ridership scenario, but we recognize the need of for, for that service and that, that specific connection. We worked closely with the Neighborhood Resource Team. We described how a lot of the young people rely on that direct connection to do things like after school activities, sports and so forth. We're relying on, you know, the desire to get to low cost grocery stores such as the Woodmans and the Pick 'n Save. And so I think that really kind of drove our decision making. This is likely not going to be a high, high ridership route. But we feel that the, the connections and the service that it provides is absolutely essential to, to carrying out the, the, the goals and the needs that we've been talking about this, this entire time, which is making sure that low income people and people of color are not, not left out of this process.
Thank you very much. That is very, very evident in this one. So I wanted to make sure that I, I lifted that up and so that that can go into the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Hengton McKenney. Alder Paulson, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
I think I have a very simple question. There are three red arrows on this map and I am not sure what they mean from the description of the text.
Sure. We did that in certain parts of this document just to show you what is changing. Sometimes it's kind of obvious and sometimes it's not. This, this is one that's very zoomed out. And so it's very not obvious what's going on. And so we added the, we highlighted Route L in yellow and then pointed to it with red arrows so that you could see what we're, what we're talking about in the text. And then you'll see the third arrow there is C2. So that's the other change. So basically what's changing here is the highlighted yellow Route L and then that C2 branch, which is, which is not part of Route L, but it's, it's a, a change that's associated with this amendment.
Okay. Thank you. It was a little hard to read all the different PDFs and combine them all. So that, that, that red arrow on C2 was where I got lost. And it's like, what the heck is this here on here for? So.
I understand. Thank you, Alder Paulson. Alder Abbas, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Yep. Thank you so much. It's, first of all, I appreciate Mike, especially Mike and transportation staff working with on the north side when first network redesign draft was presented at the committee and at the commission. It basically totally ignored the connection on the north side and especially minority, minority connection and people of color living there and disability, disabled communities. So I appreciate there is effort and amendment has been put forward. So I want to say that first. Second, good part of my district is in this amendment and I've been involved with the staff a lot in this process. And I appreciate their patience, but looking at, I will ask you as a member of the, respectful member of the committee, just look at 60 to 75 minute. Most of you use public transportation when it comes to giving opportunity to disabled communities, communities which rely on affordable groceries through Woodman. Regardless, it's not high ridership, but these people, their source of traveling is public transportation, going to Pick 'n Save, going to Woodman's. What we are telling them is 60 to 75 minute, that's what we are providing them. Previously Route 17, which was, which was approved by Neighborhood Resource Team as a net, as a workforce route. Beside connecting people from north to east and south side, it was workforce route. Very, and Metro supported that. Now all of the sudden that workforce route is converting to 60 to 75 minute. I do think so. There's a huge equity question here. And for all of us, I do think so this route should be, if it's, again, I'm not a decision maker. I'm one voice among many other voices. It should be every 30 minutes. And if not, we should reduce this time from 75 minute. It should maximum should be 45 minutes. We should add more buses. And, and I have deep concerns with this route. I really appreciate Metro is working hard, finding solution for connecting this, but who's after taking a grocery store, spending an hour in the grocery store, then waiting for 45 minutes for the bus? Who's going to feel motivated to go to the grocery store? Why, how could we treat these people like this? I just, it's mind boggling to me to see, I appreciate again, it's not like I'm criticizing as Alder of that district, what I'm hearing from people. I do think so there is a goof and need to be made. I understand with title money, but that money need to be served on this particular airline. And we need to increase either two more buses. 75 minute is unacceptable. I'm sorry to say it, just, it's too much. And I will request you guys amend this amendment, add two more buses, decrease the time maximum to 60, minimum to 45 or even less if it's possible and give them a respectful opportunity to commute from their grocery store or workforce. Again, NRT proposed Route Number 17, which is removed now completely as workforce route running due to a beacon. It was NRT recommendation. And I, I just don't understand how, how we could accept. I mean, this is pretty bad service to be honest, just to be very blunt. I know people don't like me when I'm blunt, but this is just really bad service. It's like, you know, you want service or you want worse service? That's kind of like situation we're in. So just want to say two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Abbas. Margaret, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, Alder Abbas and my comments overlap, although the place that I was starting at, just looking at this, this is the kind of route that this redesign is designed to get away from, right? The meandering route that, you know, you could get to Milwaukee faster than, you know, across Madison, you know, or from end to end on this bus. And there are some places that, you know, where there are kind of natural breaks in terms of you could break it into two routes and have it circulating faster. There are also some spots that I wonder why they're in there. I, I actually really always like having service going down Walter Street that brings people close to the botanical gardens and the lake, but, and that's very, very important. But that adds a lot of time. Depending on what happens with Manona, you know, we might end up wanting to just move that off of Manona Drive where the dotted lines are now. So I see this as, I see this as a route that we're going to tinker with. And at this time, so I, I agree with Alder Abbas. I would, I would support an amendment to add buses to this because yeah, it's too long. It's too long. But I, I appreciate the work that you guys did to, to keep these areas getting service. So. So my thoughts.
Thank you, Margaret. Baltazar, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Thank you very much. And again, I don't want to repeat what many of my colleagues he mentioned about, you know, all the work that was put into this route, you know, I think it's trying to make it work. And, you know, thank you very much for, for doing that. As I was looking into it, I, I got excited. I'm like, wow, you know? So I can take a bus from the north side to the, you know, close to the south side, like the Bridge Lake Point Community Center, you know, around that area, not, not that close. And then I read into the 60 to 75 minutes. I'm like, I don't think I will have the time to be able to do that. You know, I think that the way how, you know, and I'm just, I'm just mentioning, you know, what Alder Abbas said, you know, I think, I think we can make it yet, if we can make it more equitable, you know, because this route like this is, you know, maybe for folks who do not have a, you know, a job. I know many of our members of our community have one, two, three jobs and that will not be enough time for our, you know, members to be able to finish one job and then go to the, to go to the next job. So I'm just supporting what Alder Abbas said, but you know, thank you. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to then, you know, work on something that we know the staff and Mike and everybody put, put a lot of work into.
Thank you, Baltazar. Alder Hengton McKenney, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I have a follow up call. Could staff tell me what was the service?
Benitas Cleaning Limited 608-658-5668 or Benitas Cleaning.
Excuse me. Could the staff say what the service was into this area prior to the redistricting, redesign?
Sure. It kind of varies. So the service on Sherman Avenue here has historically been about the same every 30 to 60 minutes. Before COVID, we did have a 15 minute service at rush hour only. On Northport, so Route 21, which generally served this area on the north side, had service generally every 30 to 60 minutes, depending on evenings and weekends and that kind of thing. And it went along Northport up to Delaware and kind of around to Packers and London Dairy. And so if you look at where Route L is, Route Delaware had better service at some times at a 30 minute service instead of 60 minutes all the time. Wheeler had, had no service. This area around Packers and Northport, that area is getting substantially better service because it's being replaced by a 30 minute route and then a 15 minute route in, in that area. And then Route 17 had service that was generally every 30 minutes all the time. That was a function of several things. One is the transfer points. Because it connected two transfer points, it was sort of fundamentally, you know, a part of people's trips, even if they weren't going on Route 17, a very small amount of the ridership was actually to and from the Pick 'n Save. Most of it was from the north transfer point to the east transfer point or vice versa, just people making, making those connections. Those connections are largely replaced by Routes B and Route A, which now have service every 15 minutes instead of every 30 minutes. So Kinsman here was always roughly hourly. It was part of Route Six that ran every 30 minutes generally, and it did in every other. So every other generally went to Kinsman. So it's generally always hourly. Walter was a little bit better because it was part of Route Three historically and some other routes just kind of going to the east transfer point. Now, since, since COVID, Route Three has been replaced by Route Seven, which is over on Fair Oaks. So now this is pretty comparable to what's there today. It's again, it's kind of this hodgepodge of routes that all kind of come in at the same time. And then this part of Route 31 has, has always been hourly since Route 31 has started. It actually, the service has been generally getting better. It now has consistent hourly, all day service up until even just before the pandemic. I forget, but I think it, it didn't have service during the middle of the day. Oddly enough, it had service during the morning and afternoon rush hour once an hour and on weekends, once an hour. And then weekday evenings was added, but then it didn't have service in the middle of the day. So since COVID and with the redesign, we're kind of upgrading that to a full service route that has service all the time. And then I'll, I'll mention one thing about the 60 to 75 minute service. What we'd like to do is cycle this in two hours with two buses on it that would provide hourly service. Um, we're just a little bit concerned with how that will cycle because we've added uh, so many, um, little bits onto this. Oh, it's just, it's, it's just a very, very tight two hours. And so we're a little bit reluctant to make that promise of hourly service. I think we'd like to, as Margaret, uh, mentioned, kind of work to kind of refine little bits of this to make sure that it cycles once an hour because that, that is very, um, it makes it much more useful to at least have that hourly service that, you know, it always comes at the same time. Um, but, you know, a lot of the small parts that can be streamlined are the specific parts that people ask for. Uh, so that's kind of what we, what we have put together. You know, a lot of the discussion with, and I don't want to get off topic, but a lot of the discussion with, um, with the neighborhoods has been kind of specifically, we, we don't care how often it runs, we just, we just want a, a bus that goes to the, the Pick and Save or, or whatever. And so we're kind of responding to that desire for more of the, the door-to-door type service with this route. Um, and again, if you have any specific questions, let me go into more, more detail, just, just let, uh, let me know specifically and be happy to go into that detail.
Okay, uh, just a follow-up question. I'm really looking at that lick, cause, um, um, I was over in that area and I saw, uh, the number thirty-one, uh, but specifically the LeFollic Owl Creek. Is that that seventy, sixty to seventy-five minutes? Is that, you know, what we're looking at? Because that is a high concentration of, um, I know what communities are over in that space. So that sixty to seventy-five minutes, is that inclusive of the LeFollic and Owl Creek service area? Could you speak specifically? That's what I'm interested in.
Yeah, that, that has historically, uh, since its inception between LeFollic here on, LeFollic High School here on Flum Road and Owl Creek is south of the Belt Line, east of Stoughton Road, that has always been once an hour. And so we envision this being essentially the same. Uh, in fact, we had some conversations with the school district and they specifically said, um, you know, they'll, they'll even, like, they, like, you know, we've, we've talked about making connections and if some of the service was more frequent and if you could, you know, walk a little bit farther to get, to get the service that was more frequent. And they said pretty specifically, they're not concerned about frequency. They're, you know, and they'll, they'll, they'll make an announcement. They'll say, you know, they'll know some of the people who rely on Route Thirty-One and so they'll know that this, you know, the bus comes at this time. And so, you know, we hope to kind of schedule around that to the extent we can. But they've said, you know, we'll make an announcement that says, you know, Route Thirty-One is coming in fifty minutes of your, if you're, uh, if you're an Owl Creek, uh, person, uh, you know, now's your time to get the bus and things like that. So that, that's kind of what we talked about with them. Not as interested in frequency, more is, more interested in that, uh, direct connection.
So, um, I, I really would like to have a, a deeper conversation, but, um, here is where the rub for me for equity. And so the school district says that they're not concerned about the frequency, but just that the bus is going there. Um, and the, did the NRT support that? Because, um, uh, this is where I have to rub about the, uh, the equity. It's okay to do the sixty to seventy-five minutes there and a high concentrated, concentration of low-income people, um, not people of color, but black folks, uh, people of, that's a specific area that has, um, all of the, um, uh, the economic and the ethnic things that we're looking at. Um, but it seems to be overlooked. I'm glad to see that that connection to Pick, uh, Pick and Save, but I'm really now concerned about what's happening with that, uh, Route, uh, Bus Number Thirty-One.
Uh, correct. Yeah, between the school district and the NRT, I don't think we've heard any requests for increasing the frequency on that. Uh, we, we think that Route Thirty-One is an important route. It has never been a productive route, but in terms of the utility for the people who do use it, we think the utility is very high. Um, I'll, I see Justin has his hand up. He may have some additional insight.
Yeah, just to reinforce what Mike said, this is basically the same as what's there today. The service is current, Route Thirty-One is currently hourly and this would be roughly hourly. So this is not a, a change, a reduction in service, um, for the Owl Creek area.
It's not a reduction, it's not a, um, it's not an improvement, it's just the status quo.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Harrington. Kenny, Alder, for your call, uh, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Well, just so I don't break my strike here when it comes to Furman's comments, what would be the cost of adding an extra bus to this route? For council to determine, you know, we have a, a budget season coming up. So what will be the cost of adding route, an extra bus for it? And so, I'm sorry.
So this is a, go ahead, Justin.
It'd be roughly half a million dollars. So the, the route is currently two buses and is one point zero four million. So um, if we add a third, it would, um, be roughly one point five million.
And adding a third bus will, will, that accomplish, um, getting the thirty-minute routes or?
No, no, it, it might get us around forty-five.
So to get it for like a thirty-minute route will be two buses then?
Right. So it'd be an extra million.
Extra million. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder, for your call. Alder Abbas, go ahead, please.
Yeah, thank you so much, Chair. Um, uh, so, I mean, Alder, Figuracall already asked the question I want to ask about. I, I do think so. Two buses need to be one there. Even with two buses, it is such a zigzag, a long route and complicated. There's no guarantee it's gonna be thirty minutes, might be forty, forty-five, but at least it would be much better services from equity standpoint. A lot of people on North Port Drive are Afghani refugees. More Afghani refugees came who doesn't have driving license. Have language issue, they only gonna rely on public transportation and grocery stores going to Riverfoot Pantry Pick and Save. There's a lot of Hispanic Latino community, black community use public transportation. And just to remind, um, because this is area itself, we have tiny home village on April Avenue who also rely going on a various part of the city beside using BRT. They're gonna use L-two to go to uh, Woodman's Pick and Save and for their job. And on top of that, future ridership, that's also something missing here. Next to Tiny Home on April, there're gonna be around thousand new affordable housing resident, over twelve hundred. There is close to three hundred units gonna be developed end of this year. And there's another five hundred unit project is coming, which we're gonna discuss. Actually, next agenda item is official mapping for the road. But that basically official mapping, then it gives us opportunity to create dense five hundred unit affordable housing. So all that affordable housing, I will against stress, this are the future resident who's gonna use those routes. This is not fair to give sixty to seventy-five minutes. I am father with two kids. My kids cannot stand for ten minutes, period. And your fathers, your grandparents here on, on this call, on this meeting, you understand senior citizen cannot stand for thirty-five minutes, forty minutes in Wisconsin, brother. This is just outrageous. I absolutely, I'm absolutely appreciate the staff. They've worked really hard to find solution here. But it is lacking. This particular amendment at least need to modify that. As Alder Figuracall ask question, two more buses. That's number one. If not, then they should go back and come prefer it become of the better route to reduce the hours. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Abbas. Alder Foster, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I, I just wanna, I guess, talk a little bit big picture, you know, this, this route is a good example of that early question of ridership versus coverage. This wasn't on the draft plan because it's not really called for based on the, the number of people that live in different areas and where people need to go. This million-dollar amendment, the biggest amendment by far that's recommended by staff on here is specifically a coverage route. And this is, this is providing essential and important service to a number of different communities. And it's recommended by staff and it's a million dollars. And it's a little bit hard to be listening right now and hearing folks say, well, okay, but it's not good enough because it's only once an hour. And we're talking about a coverage route, which, of which we have many today that are this level of service or worse, that this entire redesign is, is really trying to address. And then we, we've put in and are proposing an amendment to retain, yes, not fantastic coverage, not every fifteen minutes, not even every thirty minutes, but really very good coverage for folks needing to get to the grocery stores. And they've done it, and I think a really smart way is taken a lot of work. And I, I'm just, I'm very supportive of it. And I just want to call out any one of these things. We can say, well, this isn't good enough. When our, our service, once an hour, is just simply not good enough? Well, in every route we have should be what, thirty minutes, fifteen minutes? Well, then we're just basically going back to a ridership model and we're gonna pull off things like this that are literally, we're adding on recognizing that some service is better than no service in some of these areas. The reason this is a problem is because we developed a neighborhood like Owl Creek very far away from anything else that is never going to be easy or cheap to serve. And we're making the commitment to serve it with this route here. And I feel like we should be really proud about it. And I, I just want to call this out. This, we can't have everything. We can't put a route everywhere we want to put them and have every one of those routes be high frequency. Those are the trade-offs we've been talking about since day one. That's what we're looking at here. And I'm just very grateful that staff pulled this together. And I think it's a really good balancing act between getting folks critical service that they need, doing it in a way that's responsive to their specific needs. The, the, the updates for this, for the Owl Creek neighborhood, for example, really focusing on the connection to LeFollic High School. Uh, same thing on the north side of the Pick and Save. I mean, this, this is the product of so many conversations. And I think really specifically addresses concerns that were raised by so many members of public. So I'm very supportive of it and, um, just wanted to share with them.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Alder Harrington, can you go ahead, please?
Uh, well, thank you very much for the comment, um, but, um, I'm not very satisfied with it. And when, uh, we look at other amendments who we're talking about, uh, a, a direct, um, route uh, to Vilas Park and, um, we're, uh, not looking at, um, uh, reducing the wait time for the Owl Creek area. You're absolutely right. I mean, it was a section of the city, uh, that, uh, even before I became an Alder, I heard about Owl, um, Owl Creek. But right now, as we said, we're looking at equity. We cannot make everybody happy. Uh, and, um, uh, staff has said that this is, um, not a high service uh, route, but it's one that they've recognized that has, um, you know, a strong potential and it, it's one of those must ones. And, um, I do expect, uh, uh, to have preferential treatment because this is a high concentration of the communities that we talk about serving. And so, um, I'm sorry, Alder, um, I absolutely do take this as, uh, an insult in terms of an hour and a half or sixty to seventy-five minutes, uh, for this route. And I think that it should be re-
Thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney. Um, all right, any further questions or discussion? Seeing none. On the motion to recommend adoption of Amendment Nine, all those in, all those in favor of that motion, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
Aye. Roll call, please.
Okay, roll call, vote has been asked for. Um, if you could, please call the roll.
Baltasar, Deanda Santana?
I will abstain. Is that, that's a term of record.
Yes, you may.
Okay. Barbara Harrington McKinney?
No.
Carolyn McAndrews?
Aye.
Christopher McHale?
Aye.
Grant Foster?
Aye.
Keith Vermin?
Aye.
Margaret Bergamini?
Aye.
Randy Udo?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas Wilson?
I have six ayes, one no, and one abstention. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Alder Furman, go ahead, please.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I would like to amend, uh, the amended draft plan, uh, to include Amendment Four D.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Um, Alder Furman, do you want to speak further to your motion?
No, I think obviously this, uh, yeah, I guess I will for very briefly. Obviously, this is one that has a lot of different options. Um, the staff recommended option is Four D, so I thought that was a good starting point. Um, you know, I don't know if people ask specific questions about, uh, you know, the different ones, but, um, I was comfortable with the least, starting with the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Furman. Um, questions for staff about the, um, options for Amendment Four? Um, discussion, Margaret. I see your hand up. You're up first. Go ahead, please.
Yes, I'd like to ask staff to, uh, do the side-by-side comparison of Four D and Four E as in Edward.
Okay, thanks. Uh, so yeah, as, as this kind of implied, a lot of the discussion was around Four D and Four E. Um, Four B and Four C, uh, did not get a lot of discussion or support, and, uh, Four A just was about the north end. Uh, so Four D is what staff recommends. We assembled all of the important destinations uh, and places where people live and things like that, and put them on a map and spoke with uh, community members on the south side, and I will go through them briefly. One, possibly the most, uh, most talked about one was, uh, Romulus Apartments, which is just north of Olin, about three blocks east of Park Street. A lot of older people with disabilities, uh, who live there and did, and would not be able to make the walk west towards Park Street to catch the fifteen-minute service on Park Street. And so, uh, that was, that was the goal. Uh, the Goodman Pool, uh, was, was something. There's also a site here in Olin Turville Park where the Parks Department is, is putting in a new, uh, building, a facility, or renovating a an existing building there, uh, which will have not only employees, but also people going there to, to use it. Uh, we wanted, looking at the Alliant Energy Center, the Alliant Energy Center would be served by Route G, but it's, it's kind of on the south end of the Alliant Energy Center and Route G also does not go directly downtown. There's some desire to have a direct route from at least the downtown area to the Alliant Energy Center. Uh, moving west from there in the clockwise direction, uh, there's, uh, this Capital View neighborhood or area, uh, near Rusk Street. Uh, this is Coster, is this diagonal, uh, particularly Capital View Apartments or Capital View Heights. I, I might get that name exactly, not exactly right. Um, uh, we also looked at this kind of general area where you're not seeing any service on Brahm Street, Brahm, Coster, that, that general area. Uh, some of these, uh, uh, neighborhoods directly east of Park Street, uh, there's a Saint Vincent's, uh, uh, food, um, um, uh, uh, am I blinking? But, uh, a food bank, food, food pantry, food bank, yeah. Uh, uh, right in the middle of Fish Hatchery Road, just north of the railroad tracks here. Um, and then also the SSM, uh, Sisters of Saint Mary's, uh, Health Clinic, formerly a Dean Clinic, uh, just on the north end of- Uh, just on the north end of of Fish Hatchery there. Uh, so initially with this, we were hoping to not have service on Fish Hatchery because if you look at it. Um, you know, the the areas on the south of Fish Hatchery are walkable to Badger. And then there is on the north of Fish Hatchery are walkable to Park. The area in the middle is is broadly uh, the the arboretum. Uh, you know, but the food pantry is right in the middle. And then the the clinic is, you know, there will be people who maybe have some mobility issues. Uh, and then also looking a little bit farther north of there, there's also the zoo, uh, Henry Vilas Zoo. There's been a desire from that neighborhood to have more direct service to the zoo, which is uh, generally in this area. Uh, Route Four currently is three blocks away on Mill Street. Um, and then also generally the goal of kind of filling in this service area near uh, uh, in the the Vilas neighborhood. Where there's otherwise would be no service south of region, west of, west of Park. Um, so the difference between four D and four E is basically this, this loop on Rusk, Costa, Brahm, Fisher. I believe Buick is where it, where it would come out. Um, so that's shown here, uh, Rusk, Costa, Brahm, Fisher. Uh, so there's a couple of reasons. So so uh, four E basically serves all of those things that I mentioned, basically. While four D serves all of them except these, these areas, Rusk, Costa, Brahm, and Fisher. Uh, and so I'll I'll walk you through a couple of reasons why we are not recommending four E. I also want to point out that staff recommendation is exactly what it is. That's our recommendation. We want to make sure that this, this board uh, understands its, its power and its ability to, to not just accept staff recommendation. But anyway, uh, so if you look at the populated areas near Fisher Street are are essentially between Park Street and the railroad. And so all of those areas are within a couple of blocks of Badger Road. I think that, or a couple of blocks of Park Street or Badger Road. Uh, you know, the railroad is is essentially the the cutoff line. And and I think, you know, that's about three, possibly four blocks away from Park Street. If you look at the higher density, lower income areas on Rusk Street, particularly Capital View Apartments or Capital View Heights, uh, those apartments are about two blocks away from Badger Road where they would be able to catch Route O or Route G in amendment four D. Um, and so we do not feel that uh, that making that deviation to avoid a walk of of a few blocks is 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 necessary. Um, and then if you look at the the parts that really are unique service coverage with four E. Uh, that areas is not as low income. It's predominantly low density, single family housing. Uh, so they would lose coverage under the scenario, under the the four, four D scenario. Um, but again, uh, kind of prioritizing the directness and the travel times. So I'll, I'll, I'll tell, I'll talk a little bit about what four D offers that four E does not offer. Is a relatively uh, usable and fast loop around this area. So if you think about somebody on Olin Avenue going towards downtown, this is already a fairly uh, arduous loop going significantly out of direction, all the way down John Nolan Drive in the wrong direction, down Rimrock, down Badger, all the way across Badger. Uh, crossing Park Street and then coming up up Fish Hatchery. You know, I I don't know what that travel time is, but it's probably on the order of twenty minutes. So twenty minutes goes by on the bus and you've gone, you know, essentially nowhere. Uh, and then you still have to kind of meander through this area to get to downtown. And then you're probably transferring from there quite possibly, you know, depending on where you're going. Uh, so you know, uh, four E adds probably five to ten minutes of travel time. Um, it adds the speed humps on, I think Fisher is the the street with with speed humps. Um, e- essentially bringing this loop uh, to the border of 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 really not being uh, useful to the the vast majority of people. Um, other than the people who, you know, really have the time to to go around that loop while providing very little additional coverage beyond the four D loop. So we're always trying to kind of balance that needs of 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 coverage and service to the neighborhoods while also keeping the 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 route as direct as possible. And so we feel that four D provides that that covered, that uh, that the correct balance. Um, uh, with the understanding that, uh, you know, that there will be some, some areas in that neighborhood that will have to walk farther. Or uh, you know, a few houses that will not have 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 service available. I just, just one other thing that I, you know, should should point out is that we did have a lot of conversations with the south side. There are a lot of people that are, that are actively uh, advocating for four E. Um, and so, you know, I just uh, thought it should be brought to the board's attention. Uh, staff's recommendation is four D. Um, we brought the four E uh, into the package because uh, there were, there were, there were a number of of people actively uh, asking for it. And so we wanted to make sure that the board had the choice.
Thank you, Mike. Um, we'll go then to questions and discussion. Um, Alder Carter, you're up first. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Chair. The unfortunate thing about four D is that we have senior housing, which is section eight housing on Fisher Street. And you're asking them, which also house uh, people with disabilities, to walk two blocks or so to Park Street. And right now they have a bus stop across the street from their building. Um, that is the, one of the reasons why I'm looking at four E. Um, that really rectifies that situation. Also, um, when you look at Russ and Brahm, and when you look at the people that are going to the food pantry. Uh, and it's also, I believe, a medicine pantry too, on Fish Hatchery. That is also a, a, a good walk to get to Saint Benny's on Fish Hatchery, which sometimes have a line outside of their building. In addition to, you've already heard uh, about SSM because I believe they sent a letter um, supporting um, the route that they knew about at the time, which was four D. They had not um, been aware of four E. Can you um, show, uh, I don't know if you have that map with you. Um, how many blocks it would be from the Fisher Taft Senior Apartments to Park Street? If you don't have it, then maybe you can um, just look on your own computer and and tell us.
I I think an aerial map is probably the thing that will help us the most. Um, so I will uh, bring that up now. So uh, so here's, here's, I don't know all of these uh, landmarks specifically, but.
Do you see where Quaker Housing is now Fisher Taft? Their, their bus stop right now is um, uh, basically across the street. You guys kind of have Mountain Zion a little bit further up, but that's okay. It's basically across the street at Penn Park.
Uh, right. So yeah, so so Route thirteen is currently on Fisher Street here. You can see the bus stops. Uh, so their new bus stops on Park Street would be here at Burr Oak Lane. We'll do uh, walking directions. Um, so it'd be, it'd be uh, it'd be uh, essentially two blocks. Uh, there's also, I know there's a pedestrian.
There's, there's a pedestrian connection is basically Jane Street.
There's, I know there's one here too. Uh, it doesn't really matter, but uh, there.
It's a long walk for seniors. That's all I want to point out on that one. And then for four E, I think it really just um, helps the, the, helps the area be more connected. Because we have a lot of um, people that take the bus because they have to take the bus. And walking um, on these streets, I think I read in one of the uh, emails about we're not always that good with shoveling our sidewalks, even though we live in a state that gets snow. And that is one of the issues in this area. Um, I would really would prefer that the com- the board supports four E. That is what the uh, neighborhood came out for. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Carter. Um, Alder Harrington McKinney, you're up next. Go ahead.
Did you, um, did you call a mate?
Yes, go ahead.
Right, I, I wanted to look at um, the um, uh, the Route via Randall Avenue with direct service to Vilas Zoo. And you said that there needed to be some modifications there. So could you speak to those modifications and those costs?
Uh, correct. So there's a currently a traffic circle at Randall and Vilas, which is right here at the, the bottom right corner of the R in the word Randall. Uh, that's, that circle is not passable by buses. Uh, we um, we tried it. It's uh, sort of close, but it definitely doesn't work. We would not have to remove that circle. We would just have to kind of trim the east and west edges of it. So that we can, we can pass by in the north, south direction. There also could be some parking changes there. The the northbound parking is uh, parking is allowed at night, basically. I think between six PM and eight AM or something. So we'd have to take a look at that. But it's it's mainly the the trimming of that traffic circle. We did have a uh, community meeting with Alder Evers uh, in, in, with, with neighbors over there was uh, fairly well received. I can't uh, talk about the cost, but it would be pretty minor compared to the things that we normally do. Um, you know, it might be on the order of uh, you know, ten, twenty thousand dollars, something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney. Alder Evers, go ahead, please.
Thanks, Chair. Um, thanks to staff for the work that they did and coming up with these amendments. I particularly appreciate providing transit access to uh, on Olin Avenue to the folks at Romnus. A little, um, I do observe that since it's one way traffic, because someone lives at Romnus and is getting on the bus. They're taking, and they want to get to Park Street. But they have disabilities and walking down Olin Park Street is not easy for them. Say they want to go to the new grocery store when it opens up next year. Uh, this is a challenging, I mean, they're in a sense, sitting on a bus a long time and then perhaps it well, not so long, but it, nothing really takes them directly to the grocery store on uh, Truman Olsen on the fourteen hundred block in South Park. They'd have to get off, if I understand correctly, at Badger and Park, then take that bus up to, to fourteen, to the fourteen hundred block where the new grocery store is. So it it just seems challenging, but I understand we're, we're not going to be able to get door to door to service to everywhere that people want to go. I just wanted to make that observation. But thank you, and also thank you for addressing what was a stated need in the Vilas Park Master Plan, which was to get transit access over at the Vilas Park and to the Henry Vilas Zoo. Um, if most of you know that the zoo, if you don't know, the zoo has become increasingly popular over the year and there are now seven hundred and fifty thousand annual visitors to the zoo. And it causes a fair amount of congestion in terms of parking and people looking for places to park. And having transit access, I think, can and will make a difference. Um, I I do want to ask a couple of questions though, uh, and get you to speak about something that was discussed by Tom and others at the very beginning of this meeting, I believe, and Justin as well. That there, it's anticipated that there will be adjustments and tweaking tweaks that are made. And actually, in the history of bus routes and, and the metro system, tweaks and adjustments to routes are rather commonplace. Um, we're not putting in infrastructure. We're not building a subway system. We're simply coming up with hopefully a more efficient uh, transit system using, using buses and and in some instances a much faster buses, larger buses, once BRT is implemented. But can you speak um, perhaps to whether there be wisdom? And I I I'd like to suggest the possibility that we would pass, that the, that the board would consider approving four E with the idea of doing so provisionally. Because you have concerns, I think, that there's some inefficiency on those bus stops on Costa, which are not all, not used all that much, that we don't get a lot of riders there, apparently from the two thousand nineteen data from conversations I've had with staff. And that the reason why you emphasize four D is that where the population centers are in Brandt's Edition and in Capital View are closer to Badger Road and closer to South Park. Nonetheless, as Alder Carter mentioned, the, the low income senior housing on Fisher Street um, is, is a consideration. And there's also the issue that in the town of Madison property waiting to be attached on Rusk, south of Nygaard. From what I understand, on that part of Russ, there are no sidewalks. So we would, if you blew up, if you return to the map, we would be asking folks who are on Rusk, who currently have access nor, let's say, in those stops north of Nygaard there. They would then be walking down Nygaard to Badger Road, but there are no sidewalks. And they apparently aren't scheduled to have sidewalks until twenty twenty-five. And so that's a consideration that perhaps during winter time, folks will be walking in the middle of the street. Um, I'm not sure if that's something that doesn't argue for, for E as well. So what I guess I'm saying is that perhaps in voting and approving four E, you could do so provisionally. And if there are concerns that there are inefficiencies, that more and more people are choosing to walk two blocks to get the frequency of the fifteen, every fifteen minute frequency by walking over to South Park and nobody's getting on the, the bus in the interior of these neighborhoods. Then you could tweak it then. Then you could go back to essentially four D. But you would start from four E and give the benefit of the doubt to the people in this neighborhood who have concerns that they're losing access, and particularly the, the people uh, currently living in the senior housing on Fisher Street. So I'd like to suggest that to the board and wonder if staff might have some commented thoughts as to whether that makes sense.
Um, just, just a few comments. I see other staff are in, have, have some information as well. But uh, to to go with your, your initial, which you said at the beginning of that, Alder Evers is um, uh, so we, we typically make changes every August. Once a year, we kind of save up our changes. Um, and so you're correct that, you know, we, we, we anticipate some adjustments to this. We'll put it in place in June of twenty-three and then we anticipate another August change that will reflect uh, some prob- probable changes to the schedules because the runtimes that we calculated weren't, weren't exactly right. And then we also anticipate probably a follow up uh, discussion of how the routes are working and if some other uh, adjustments are made. Uh, the last major change was in uh, ninety-eight, so um, uh, you know, the, the, probably the biggest significant change since then was when uh, the city took over from the Madison Bus Company in, I think, nineteen seventy. Uh, so we're kind of on this sort of separate uh, and now it's twenty twenty-two. So we're on kind of a separate roughly twenty to thirty year track of making major changes. Uh, and and major changes usually come with adjustments, uh, for example, in the years following.
Uh, and and major changes usually come with adjustments. Uh, for example, in the years following nineteen ninety-eight, up until about two thousand five, there were some fairly major uh shakeups and adjustments uh to the transfer point system. Um, a- as far as uh adopting or recommending adoption of 4E provisionally, uh, I, you know, I would say that uh, you know, that that would be an option, that would be possible. Um, with the understanding that a change back to 4D uh, you know, would be considered a separate change. I see uh Justin is has his hands up and and Ben Lyman as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to add on that on that front, you know, the making a provisional change automatically, I think, would be challenging since it's several years down the road. You know, I can imagine that uh, you know, some future versions of ourselves in three or four years, if we just dropped in this change um without community input, that would be a bad thing. So um, I I think it's perfectly reasonable to uh for us to have a a common understanding that we'll revisit this in a couple of years, but um I wouldn't necessarily provisionally approve it. Um, I would probably suggest you either just approve it or not. Uh, but again, that doesn't mean we can't revisit in in a few years when there are sidewalks.
Thanks, Justin. Benjamin, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, yeah, regarding sidewalks on Rusk um and on Badger, the City of Madison applied for transportation alternatives funding through the MPO to build a separated path from um Nygaard south on Rusk and then going west to connect to the existing overpass, um, the pedestrian overpass. And that, I think, I I not logged in my remote desktop right now, but I think that was for twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six. Um, maybe Tom Lynch remembers offhand if he's still still on. Um, but that was it hasn't been finalized by the MPO Policy Board, but um that was a very high, it was actually one of the MPO's top-scoring projects in that round of solicitation and only got bumped down because the city had other priorities, but we do expect to be funding that that separated path um connecting along Rusk and Badger to that that existing overpass and really filling that gap in the the high-stress network currently um in in the near future, and the exact timing remains to be seen, but I I think twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six is kind of the the out the outer edge of of when that might happen.
I don't have too much more to add.
I don't recall exactly. I I seem to recall it as the funding being a little bit sooner, but uh the funding's been obtained. The City of Madison's committed to it.
Thank you. Um, Chris, go ahead, please.
Thanks. Um, I appreciate the spirit of Alder Evers' recommendation. I think one of the things I don't love about 4E is that we're trying to run routes in a sort of inefficient way to solve a bunch of problems that aren't necessarily due to the buses, like connectivity problems, some caused by the train tracks. Um, I think, you know, we heard the the Catholic Multicultural Center supports this so that they can maintain their access in front. But they also, I think, their property faces um Route B. So some of these things, I think, could be fixed through simple connectivity improvements. Um, but, you know, I'm kind of indifferent. I think since uh for procedurally, I guess, if I'm not mistaken, 4D is on the table. So you probably have to vote on that first. I would probably vote yes to that, just to see if there's an appetite from other board members, and then I guess we'd have to move on to 4E. So just throwing that out there.
Um, my understanding is that if we vote yes on 4D, then we would move on to a different amendment. The other ones would not be on the table, just to make that clear. All right, Margaret, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Uh, just a a comment about this, the 4E option. Uh, definite in in 4D and 4E, um, obviously, 4E is more roundabout for many folks. Um, and this to me is um kind of a perfect example of how without more resources for Metro, we can't fix every problem, right? We can't, we can't give people the service they deserve. Um, I I I've lived in Madison since the early eighties, and it seems to me that this bus route had, I mean, I remember taking this bus route to what is now called the uh the multicultural center when I was first thinking about moving to Madison. And um, it's clear that there are a number of institutions, uh churches, social service agencies, daycare centers, elderly housing, public housing in the Fisher, you know, in in what's called Bramstedtion that are very much oriented to the that bus uh that bus route. And I don't know how long that bus route's been there, but I suspect it goes back at least to the sixties, if not earlier. Is it inefficient in terms of uh speed, time, especially if you're only running buses in one direction? Oh, heck, yes. You know, if I lived in Romney's apartments and wanted to get to a grocery store, wanted to get, you know, wanted to get to someplace near Olin and and uh Park but couldn't walk it, uh, I would be severely annoyed at the doing the scenic route uh through the entire neighborhood. Um, and that's the kind of thing that could be solved if we had more resources and could run buses in both directions. Um, and it this is a classic case of the, you know, efficiency versus coverage. Um, there's just so much built up around that route that is so critical to so many different constituencies that if we're gonna, I I would prefer to see for uh, you know, somehow come up with enough money to run buses in both directions and do 4E, or somehow make some kind of like a local versus an express, which is kind of what we have eventually with BRT, but, you know, no, it is a significant walk for somebody who's elderly um to get from Quaker Houses over to Park Street. So uh, this this to me is a a tough one, and and I wish I I I I wish I had a straw poll from the neighborhood, from all these neighborhoods over what they'd like to see. Um, but I I'm reluctant to take service off of I I don't know. I have very mixed feelings about it. Sorry to just be so ambivalent about it, but I am. And I'd like to hear more from people who have been at those meetings about sort of which way the constituencies were tipping.
Thank you, Margaret. Alder Foster, go ahead, please.
Thanks, Chair. Um, quick question for staff. I know this is uh hard to do with precision, but just ballpark. Um, how many riders do we expect would be using this route that would be, let's say, getting, you know, getting on before this uh potential deviation on to to Rusk? So whether they're getting on at Ramnus or uh the um Coliseum or whatever, what what's a kind of general number of folks that we would expect on this route? And what's the number of riders we expect would access one of the uh stops with this deviation of 4D?
So um, Mike, Mike, I can take that up. I've been pulling that up here. Um, so you know, we can't say for sure how many people will use the route since we, you know, it's a different route than what we've had, but um, just looking at the historic ridership along Olin and along Fishetree Road, um, presuming that at least in one direction, anybody on either of those corridors is going to have to ride through this deviation. Um, the total ridership amongst all those stops is around a hundred a day. Um, in this 4E deviation, um, the two stops or the stops that are that Mike mentioned are about two blocks away from other service. So the ones at Capital View are around twenty-five or so a day. The ones along Fisher Street are maybe twenty a day in total. Um, and then those along Costa are three or four a day. Um.
If I if if I could add, sorry, if I could, it could add to that, one of one of the factors in play here is that the current Park Street service, Route Five, does not go to the UW campus. It goes up West Washington Avenue to the square, whereas Route Thirteen, which serves this area currently, does go to the UW. And so it's it's quite possible that the people boarding Route Thirteen around Fisher and Bram um, you know, are not boarding it because are not boarding at those stops that Justin mentioned because they they want that particular route, but more because it happens to go to UW campus. Route B will will provide substantially different service than Route Five. Not only will the service be twice as frequent, but it will also connect to the UW area as well as the Capitol Square. So it's it's possible, again, we don't know, but it's possible that some of that ridership will will shift to Route B.
Thank you. That's helpful. Um, well, I'll I'll just share, I I support 4D. Um, I actually, I just said that, just to make sure. Yes, no, four, sorry, 4C is the one that's recommended by staff, correct?
Uh, 4D.
4D, okay, yes, not 4E. Okay, yeah, so fine. I support 4D. Um, I I mean, my my base instinct was that, and mostly because I've seen how hard staff has worked to accommodate preferences that are put out by the community. And so I re- I my initial thought before looking into the details was, you know, if these were at all close, I'm pretty confident staff would have said, yeah, we're happy to recommend 4D or 4E, or you know what, we'll just recommend 4E. And so I was really struck by the fact that they were not supporting 4E. And as I dug into it and as we're having this conversation today, I mean, it it is really obvious to me why 4D is better than 4E, and it is what we just heard. It's all of the people that are going to use this route. They're going to have to meander through this neighborhood for the benefit of very few people and for a very, very tiny benefit, if any. And the fact that we're spending all this time talking about folks, particularly in in Quaker Housing, which is less than four hundred feet from Park Street, less than a tenth of a mile walk to a bus stop that will have, in this draft plan, will have every fifteen-minute service on a BRT bus, particularly for people that are in wheelchairs or mobility devices, can can have level boarding, don't even have to, can just roll right on. And we're saying that we got to go out of our way, slow down everybody else that's going to use the O so that somebody there can have a basically a one-minute walk to a stop that's one-way once an hour instead of a two-minute walk to to go anywhere they want to go every fifteen minutes. And I mean, that's the rea- that's why staff is saying we don't really recommend that. I mean, why? We we've got places all over the city where people are going to have ten-minute, fifteen-minute walk or more, where, you know, really getting going to have some challenging access. It's it's literally, it's like almost impossible to get better access than a a two-minute walk to a bus stop. And so for us to be sitting here and saying, well, but there's seniors. I mean, if you can't, if you can't walk or roll two minutes to get onto a bus, transit doesn't work for you. I mean, on one way, on whether you're getting on it or getting off of it, to expect that transit is going to be door-to-door service, that's not what transit is. And if we're saying that a two-minute walk or wheelchair ride is too much and that we need to, we need to make service poor for a whole bunch of people to cut someone's walk or wheelchair ride from two minutes down to one minute, I mean, we're just getting into absurdity land. So I I appreciate all the advocacy. I get why people wanted to have another line go through here. But for exactly the people we're trying to talk about, everybody's talking about equity, everybody living in the Ramnus apartments, they're going to, every single time they take the bus, would have to go and 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 go up Rusk, Costa, Bram, back down Fisher, over speed humps just to get back to Badger Road. It doesn't make any sense, and it's not good transit planning. So I I support 4D, and I encourage my colleagues to do the same.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Um, Alder Carter, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Chair. I think it's quite interesting that when we talked about Ramnus, we talked about the residents that were disabled and and could not walk, you know, north or south to catch the bus, that they wanted the bus stop to be in front of Ramnus, and that was okay. And yet we go to Fisher Taft Apartments, formerly Quaker Housing, and those seniors need to wheel, crawl, use crutches, whatever, it's two minutes, so what? I find that very interesting in the comparison. I would just say that I am supporting 4E, and I wish that all of you would too. But let me just remind each and every one of you. If you live long enough, you will be a senior. And I pray that you will be a senior and good health and good mobility. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Carter. Um, Baltazar, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Uh, I I think, you know, just, uh, the only thing that I want to say is, uh, you know, the we have an opportunity to provide folks with something that they might not have. And they can go in and hide behind equity concepts and, you know, we are so sometimes Madison is really great with that. I I think, you know, uh, I I do support 44E a hundred percent just because we're going to be providing folks, uh, such as the multicultural centers, such as all these other community centers and places uh that, yeah, it's going to take a little bit longer, you know, that the community is going to be a little bit longer. Uh, but, you know, I think it is going to be very, very important that we provide that opportunity to folks who come to the Footbentry uh over at the multicultural center, folks uh who, you know, are are going to be, uh, you know, have have to, you know, uh, have this to be a little bit more accessible. And, uh, you know, sometimes if we measure equity in many terms, uh, we we forget about the the important concept. Many, many of the people that I know live in that area, you know, in the south side, in in that specific area, and and I know for 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 many of them, it's going to be very, very important. 4E is one of the uh amendments that were added lately after there was a meeting with the community. So, you know, we go out there, we ask the community, uh, I feel is is the the only good practice is to support what the community is informing us in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Baltazar. Are there any further questions or discussion? Okay, seeing none. So the current motion is to recommend adoption of 4D. On the motion to recommend adoption of 4D, or I'm sorry, recommend, yes, recommend adding uh 4D um to the amended plan, um, why don't we just do this one as a roll call vote? Um, an I is for recommending adoption. A no is for not recommending adoption. If the motion would fail, we would then go to another motion on a different motion. If the clerk would please call the roll.
Baltazar, they ascend.
No.
Barbara Harrington McKinney.
No.
Kylie McAndrews.
Abstain.
Christopher McAhill. Grant Foster. Keith Furman.
Aye.
Margaret Bergamini.
No.
Randy Udo.
No.
We have three I's, four noes. Uh, the noes have it, so the motion fails in one extension. Okay, because we just talked about four at length, is there another another motion on uh Amendment Four? Margaret, go ahead, please.
Yes, I'd like to.
Yes, I'd like to move adoption of 4E. Amendment 4E.
Is the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Randy. Margaret, did you want to speak further to your motion?
No, I think we've talked it over.
Thank you. We will proceed with a roll call vote on this one as well. An I is in favor of adopting 4E. A no is a favor, a motion, a vote against. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Baltazar, DeSena.
Aye.
Barbara Harrington McKinney.
Aye.
Kylie McAndrews.
Abstain.
Christopher McAhill. Christopher McAhill.
Aye.
Grant Foster. Grant Foster.
No.
Keith Furman.
Aye.
Margaret Bergamini.
Aye.
Randy Udo.
Aye.
I have six I's, one no, and one abstention. The I's have it. That motion carries. Alder Furman, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to move a motion to amend the amended draft plan to include Amendment 30A.
Okay, there is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Randy. Alder Furman, do you want to speak further to your motion?
I'm sure. This is another staff recommendation. I certainly, you know, we have to figure out how to pay for our amendments, and this is, this is one of the ways to do that.
Thank you, Alder Furman. Questions or discussion? Margaret, go ahead, please.
Yes, sorry, I didn't quite hear. Is this 30A that we're voting on? Thank you. Let's see the cursor.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so at this point, is anybody on staff keeping score in terms of how much we've added, how much we've subtracted with the current amendments? That is, we have added 2.2 mil? Um, okay, thank you for that.
Okay, any further questions or discussion? All right, on the, seeing no, see no further questions or hands up for discussion on the motion to recommend adoption of Amendment 30A, that's 30A. All those in favor, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Those no? Any abstentions? Chair believes it's unanimous. If you'd like to register a no or abstention, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands, raise it. We'll go on as unanimous. Thank you. Alder Furman, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move a motion to amend the draft, the amended draft plan with Amendment 31.
Thank you, Alder. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Randy. Alder Furman, do you want to speak further to your motion?
Sure. Thank you, Chair. Pretty, pretty simple, just like 30A. We need to pay for these changes, and this is a staff recommendation of a way that we can go ahead and, and start to pay for all the changes we made earlier today. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Margaret, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I'd like to speak against this one. In particular, because I think that our evening service pre-COVID, this is where it gets difficult, right, comparing the world before and the world now. But routes, many of our routes were extremely crowded, not all of them, but for example, going through the campus area, 7:00 to 8:00 is still prime time for people going home from work, and particularly graduate students and undergraduates. So I think that actually moving to keeping a daytime service level until 8:00 PM is actually going to gain you more fare box than you might expect. So I would speak again, that's why I'm speaking against this.
Thank you, Margaret. Alder Furman, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Chair. I don't know if staff can address the fare box question. Obviously, we, you know, we're at 1.6 million. Staff asked us to stay somewhere around 1 million. And even that, you know, is assuming that the common council is going to be able to give additional money when we have huge budget deficits. So I'm just curious if, you know, where this 600K estimate came from, and see if they can address Margaret's notion that the fare box is higher than expected, and maybe this reduction isn't entirely necessary.
Yeah, so, you know, we haven't, we haven't made any assumptions in change in fare box revenue, you know, for this, but certainly our fare box revenue is generally less than a quarter of our total budget. So even if the revenue were a bit higher than we expect, it's still going to add on the order of 500,000, if not 6,000. So, you know, we won't, it's very difficult for us to predict that, but I think, and Mike, maybe you want to add more about what the 2019 service transition time was, but my understanding that even a 7 o'clock transition is better than what we've got.
Right, yeah. Historically, it's always dropped off somewhere between about 6:00 and 6:30. So pushing it to 7:00 is still a slight improvement. You know, the ridership did sort of drop off right around that time. It's hard to tell if there's unmet demand that, you know, would have kept the ridership higher going later. You know, some of those last trips were not super well utilized, but some of them were. Like Justin said, it's pretty difficult to tell.
And, and one thing I would add, for all of these, these pay fours here, for evening service, weekend service, these are not things we, you know, we want to see improvements in night and weekend service. We understand that the budget doesn't exist for it right now, but those are things which are very easy to add service in the future if budget is allowed, does allow it in some way. It's much more difficult to add a route or to change frequencies of routes. It's much, much easier to add some span of service and some improvement in nights and weekends. And so I view this as, that night and weekend service is something that we really want, but, you know, ultimately, we've got to wait for the money to come, and once it does, we can very easily add that in.
Thank you. Margaret, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I didn't mean to suggest that fare box would replace the entire cost of that additional hour by any stretch. I'm well aware of what the fare box ratios are, and I'm also well aware of how much our unlimited pass programs represent of that fare box. It's, it is, it is, and it, given the coming budget deficits, it's going to be hard to add service. It definitely is hard to, it's hard to make any changes. Look, how many hours have we been here, right? How many thousands of hours have we spent on this in the past two years? I just think that this is, extending to eight is a way, and maybe we end up not doing it on every single route, but I'd like to leave it in there and then scale it back in the next round of the planning process, if necessary, but look very carefully at what routes we had crowding in the evenings. Ditto for Saturday service. And see if we can't make some more surgical cuts rather than, you know, across-the-board cuts like that.
Go ahead, Sean.
Yeah, so, so yeah, I'm Sean Hetzbeth, Planning and Scheduling Manager. So I'm going to be in charge of implementing this. When we're looking at span, especially with these much longer routes, we're going to be looking at little things like first trip, last trip. There's going to be little micro decisions to make, like if it's driving by East Washington, should it just pull in, or should it keep on going to the end of the line? There's going to be little micro decisions there that we're going to definitely make with the best data we have, and try to squeeze as much service as we can for the ridership we have out there. You know, I do see some, some people have climbed from this, but I agree with Justin that we could be able to add service later to make up for this, but I think there will be little micro decisions that we will make that will definitely directed by ridership information, especially for little half trips and, and, you know, trip, like I said before, trips that might, might pull in halfway through, and we could, you know, so it's like, you know, example, you say it runs till 8 o'clock, is that the last bus stop it serves? Or is that the last trip that comes from the square? You know, what matters to people and things. So there'll be little micro decisions that we will make with the best data we have. So I just want, yeah, in any, you know, if we're able to do it, if our conservative projections pencil out to being able to provide more service, we certainly will. So I just wanted to kind of clarify some of the implementation decisions we will make.
Thank you, Sean. Are there any further questions for staff or discussion on this motion? Seeing none on the motion to recommend adoption of Amendment 31. All those in favor, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 No?
No.
No.
Two noes. Chair believes there are six I's, two noes. The I's have it. So that motion carries. Go ahead, Margaret.
Yes, I would like to move Amendment 30B.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second? Thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney. There's a second. Margaret, would you like to speak further to your motion?
Sure. If you're looking to make up the money and have some, and have some contingency fund, there you go. There's your, I mean, and yes, of course, preferably BRT runs frequently. But until, who knows when, BRT is going to be one line going through the city. And I'd rather cut that out than do the death of a thousand cuts. So that's my reasoning.
Thank you, Margaret. Go ahead, Justin.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, I just want to clarify the structure of this. The costs here are intended to be either or, 30A or B. So it's not cumulative negative 700,000 and negative 1,400. It's either or, so just want to make that clear, that we certainly could substitute 30B for 30A. But it would, the net savings of the two combined would, would only be another 700,000. So it would be, if this were to pass, it would be that and not that. So just want to clarify that. So it'd be, it'd be taking our deficit from 1 million down to 300,000.
Thank you, Justin. Mike, go ahead. Yeah, just, just one more clarification. Margaret mentioned one line, the BRT in this scenario is both Route A and Route B. So Route A is the BRT line that will get the capital improvements, but they're getting the exact same amount of service. So we're, this is, actually affects two routes, Route A and Route B, just a clarification on that. Thank you. Margaret, go ahead, please.
Yeah, then I'd like to get some clarification on planned implementation of Route B, to make sure that I don't have a fundamental misunderstanding here. Because my under- Route A, and we're going to run it probably for a year without all the infrastructure being built out, but Route A is number one, and do- So just want to make sure I understand. Maybe Mike can answer that for me.
Sure, and you cut out for me, Margaret, so I apologize if, I don't know if I cut out for everybody, but the audio was in and out there. But let me just explain Routes A and Route B. So they are both going to be, we envision them as kind of a two, two-route, crisscrossing BRT spine. We will purchase all of the BRT buses for Routes A, Route B, as well as A, as well as F, R, and Y, that's the Middleton service. So all of the buses for all, all of that service will be here in 2024.
Okay.
The infrastructure for the East-West Line Route A will be completed in 2024. Between 2023 and onward, Routes A and B are envisioned to have the exact same level of service with the same buses. But only the East-West Line will have the capital improvements, the bus lanes and the stations and so forth. We will start planning for Route B, the capital improvements for Route B essentially imminently here. And so the intent is that the similar capital improvements, the stations and bus lanes and so forth for Route B will be in place towards the latter end of this decade, so in the 2028, 27, 28 range. That those improvements will be completed then. I, so that, that is the intention, but starting in 2023, they would have the same service levels, and they would always use the same buses. Does that answer your question?
It answers part of my question, and thank you for that, and I'm sorry my internet was unstable there for a moment. So I'd like then to get a clarification on these estimates, these cost estimates. So the, say, let's just say 30B for the moment. Cost saving of, you know, 1.34. When? Is that in '24? That you're talking about, that entire cost savings, or, I mean, or the 700,000, I understand what you were saying, Justin, about Saturday and Sunday service, so. But, you know, how are we counting these cost savings?
So that would be operating costs, and that would be immediately seen in 2023 in comparison with the draft plan as already amended.
Okay. And other than the south end of the route, where we seem to have some consensus, we don't have much consensus on the north end of the route for the Route B, is my impression. We don't know yet if we're running down Packers or Sherman Avenue, and what exactly we'll be replacing.
So the, the intention is that the, the route structure, that's the result of this process, would, would determine the routing for Route B. So it would be on Packers and Northport and doing the one-way loop via Northport and Troy on the north end, and then Park Street, Badger, and Fish Hattery on the south end.
Okay. Well, given all of this, I'm, I think the simplest thing for me to do is just to leave my motion as it stands for 30B, understanding that the actual cost savings, since we've already voted for 30A, would be- voted for thirty A, would be about seven hundred thousand. If the rest of the committee is okay with that.
Thank you, Margaret. Uh, Chris, go ahead, please. Mr. Mute, Chris.
Yeah, hopefully I'm not having a bad connection either, but um in the spirit of um scaling things back so that we can add more dynamically. Um, it, would you say that this, considering this amendment would um make it any easier to to add later service um on like Thursdays through Saturdays when people are drinking sometime down the road, down the road?
Uh, well, um, this is sort of, just simplify this. Uh, you can see that a twelve-hour span of frequent service on the BRT line is roughly, uh, I'm gonna say six or seven hundred thousand dollars for one weekend day is it is essentially equivalent to the one-hour service on weekdays for the many other routes, so that they're about, about the same. Um, as far as, so I, if I can, if I can assume that you're asking about essentially extending the service span on Thursdays and Fridays, another state, or I don't know, Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays, something like that, another, uh, you know, two hours or something. Uh, off the top of my head, I'd say it's probably in the ballpark of uh roughly that, that cost uh area.
And if I could add something on that. When we do those day-to-day deviations in schedules, it does make our scheduling and driver assignments much more difficult. Um, and so I would have some serious reservations about, um, you know, how difficult that would be to implement.
Okay. Um, why did you not recommend this one? Just, if you could speak real quickly to that.
I, I think the, the main thing is that we feel that there's a big opportunity for weekend ridership that has never been tapped, um, because we have historically had such poor service. Um, and we feel that, you know, originally we had hoped to get it on both days, but we recognize that that's not really going to be possible, but I think uh ensuring we keep it on at least one day of the weekend can allow us to test that market um and and potentially show how strong weekend ridership can be. Um, and uh, you know, that may give additional justification at some point in the future, but uh, and I don't know if uh if Daniel's still on, but you know, I know our ratio of um, weekend ridership to weekday ridership is very low compared to other cities. Um, primarily because our service drops off so much. Um, and I think that there's a, a big untapped market there for weekend ridership that we're just not accessing. John, I don't know if you had something to add to that, too?
Yeah, I I just been tracking ridership uh since, since I arrived last uh, last summer. And I think September marked the time where the Saturday ridership was back to twenty nineteen. Uh, so it, if you, if you look at it, it, it hasn't moved quite like it have, it hasn't, COVID hasn't affected weekend ridership nearly as much as weekday. Um, so especially Saturdays are a little bit better than Sundays. Um, so that was just, that was one of the reasons we, we put it out there.
Okay, thanks.
All right, um, are there any further questions or discussion on this motion or for this motion? Okay, seeing none. I believe it was thirty, thirty B, right? Yes. Yeah, on the motion to recommend adoption of amendment thirty B, that's three zero B. Um, all those in favor of recommending adoption, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
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 Chair is unsure about the numbers, but please, the noes have it. Is there any request for roll call? Okay, the noes have it. Alder Furman, go ahead, please.
Um, yes, I'd like to move um recommendation of the amended draft uh network redesign plan.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alder Foster, thank you. Alder Furman, did you want to um speak further to your motion?
Sure. Um, this, this obviously was an incredibly difficult process that lasted a long time, but I'm greatly appreciated. Greatly appreciate all the work staff put into this. Um, um, we can never have enough engagement, but I do think staff did a ton of amazing engagement work and reaction to the engagement. I think a lot of times we have engagement and we don't see that many changes. Um, we saw a ton of changes um that were well thought out, a lot of different options. And staff, I think, this evening did a fantastic job of um explaining what, why the recommendations were the way they were. Um, no plan is perfect, but I definitely think that this plan does get us to a much better place for our transit service. And so I'm hopeful that this board can recommend this and we can start uh the process of doing the next steps. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Alder Furman. Um, Alder Paulson, go ahead, please.
Yeah, just a process question. Um, I realize that I can't vote on motions, but under some rules, and I'm not sure what the cities are here. Uh, as an ex officio member of the board, I can make motions and I'm not sure if I have that ability here.
I don't believe so, um, but the city attorney could correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay. Well, it's a bummer, and I was kind of hoping maybe I can get a, a penny motion of eighteen B from someone, but I will hold it for tomorrow.
Thank you, Alder Paulson. Chris, go ahead, please.
Thanks. Um, I know we've heard a lot of concerns um about this moving forward. I don't know where this board will head and I don't know where council will head tomorrow, but um I, I am in favor of, of recommending the, the, the plan as it is. Um, I totally agree with the concerns we've heard tonight. Um, you know, some blind spots appeared later in the process that, you know, we worked to address on the fly sort of last minute. Um, but, but I think, you know, as, as Justin said earlier, like this is not pencils down for this. Um, you know, we're recommending a plan and just as we do now with the transit system, we will hear more input. We will make more tweaks. Um, ultimately, you know, it's really up to, the Trans- Transportation Commission is going to go through the details of this and approve more recommendations down the road as we've seen, um, like when Owl Creek service first went in. Um, so I, I just hope folks will keep that in mind. Um, and I, and I think the sooner we hit the ground running with, with a dry run, um, the sooner we can learn some of those tweaks we need to make. Um, other thing, I think, I, I think, you know, we've heard a lot, and in my mind, that just signals that, you know, we have, we are, we are learning how to have better real discussions about this, this stuff. Um, we are learning better how to reach out to folks. We've seen a lot of real interest in transit and interest in making transit better. Um, and I hope that this process has kicked that off and that will continue. Um, most of the problems we've heard really come down to just, we need more transit and more transit funding. Um, and that's always going to be the case. Um, but we can't let that, you know, hold us back from laying a new groundwork that we can, that we can move from um going forward. Um, so, yeah, and one last thing is, um, I think a lot of the issues we heard also pointed to problems that are outside the realm of network design, uh, you know, I, I said this earlier, but like, we've heard about missing sidewalks. Um, we've heard about missing connections. Um, we've heard about develop, development happening in the wrong places. Um, and those are all things that we need to keep focusing on and making better. Um, so I think, I think moving forward with this, this draft plan um is, is the way to go right now.
Thank you, Chris. Margaret, go ahead, please.
Yes, thank you, Chris. Um, and those, I agree with your comments. Um, and to build on them, uh, I think that I, I'm going to vote in favor of this this evening. Um, uh, certainly it has weaknesses, um, it, it has strengths. Um, but I'm not going to let the perfect be the enemy of the good here. We need to move forward, we need, and there will be opportunities to, and there will be the necessity for changes and tweaks as we get into the next phase of planning uh and funding and go through the city budget process, et cetera. Um, I would like, like to argue the, in terms of process. Um, and I don't want to go too far out of order here, but I strongly believe that the transport, that this board, that this should come back to this board. And I also wouldn't mind if it came back to a joint meeting of this board and the Transportation Commission. But I don't understand why TP, why the Policy and Planning Board's role ends now and it gets turned over to the Transportation Commission. Um, especially after we've gone through this long process of learning and working through the issues. So I'm going to vote yes tonight, and I hope I get a chance to vote on it again in a couple of months.
Thank you, Margaret. Are there any further questions or discussion? Okay, on the motion then to amend um the draft plan with the amendments that um we've discussed tonight and passed. Um, an aye vote is to recommend adoption, a no vote is against. Um, let's do this as a roll call vote, please, if they're corporate, please call the roll.
Altsar, Daya San, Dayanus Santana?
Aye.
Barbara Harrington McKinney?
No.
Carolyn McAndrews?
Aye.
Christopher Mckayhoe?
Aye.
Grant Foster?
Aye.
Margaret Bergamini?
Aye.
Randy Udo?
Aye.
I'm missing, Mr. Keith Furman?
Aye.
And that is seven ayes, one no, the ayes have it. Thank you all, thank you to staff, thank you to the city attorney, thank you to our consultant, Jared Walker, thank you to everyone who's participated in this. As, as has been said, this is not the end, there's a lot more to come. Um, appreciate everyone's input and feedback, and of course, this will be before common council tomorrow evening. All right, we will then move on to Legisstar six nine five one nine. Um, amending the City of Madison official map to establish map reservations for future streets and highways in the City of Madison consistent with recommendations in the adopted Ostermeier Special Area Plan. I'll make a comment quick, I know it, I know it's late, but we do need to get, get to this. Planning staff does need to have, have this from us as soon as possible. I cannot delay wait until next time. Um, Heather, go ahead, please.
Thank you very much, and, and thank you indeed for your stamina this evening. I'll try to make this as, as quick as practical, but want to provide some background and stress the importance of, of getting your recommendations this evening as the TPPB due to some urgency with a, a potential developer, uh, the first developer in on the Ostermeier, the broader Ostermeier Special Area Plan site, which we're very excited about. Um, I'm going to share a few slides here. Um, and as we begin, I want to mention that uh, I'm, I'm going to show a little bit of an evolution of our planning process and then get cut right to the chase. But I want to say that I think we have a lot of shared interests with uh folks that I'm sure you'll hear from soon, who are here and registered for public comment. I think that our shared interests are the implementation of the Ostermeier Special Area Plan and really setting a framework for development that can include several hundred new households, businesses, and employment opportunities on this largely industrial site today. I think we want to make sure that we all put our best foot forward as a city um and find the best network possible um with regard to transportation to really support a dramatic change in land use here on the near north side. Um, we also share an interest of creating uh eventually a very high-quality park space for use by current and future residents. We'll talk a little bit about that. But I want to show quickly the evolution of uh the plan um starting back in late twenty nineteen. As you'll see here on the left, um, the plan has long had a, a park space in this area on the former Hartmeier site. But it has gotten much larger over time, and that is really due to some, some persistent input from residents in the surrounding area um and, and work on the part of the alder and city staff to, to support the, the park. Um, as of early twenty twenty, um, the park had grown uh in the uh, the proposed plan to about thirteen point five acres. And then when the plan was formally introduced in February, uh, the park was again uh slightly, slightly larger here. What's, what's most critical, I think, is this image on the right. This is really the adopted Ostermeier Special Area Plan, um, or an important excerpt of it, showing a, a future park uh of approximately sixteen acres in size in this area here. Importantly, and we'll go into this, an important north-south connection linking Ruskin and Huxley Streets, and then an important east-west connection through the site uh with Roth Street continuing with a new railroad crossing here um all the way to where Coolidge currently intersects with Packers. What's before you this evening is, again, the official map amendment, and I want to just mention quickly um what official mapping does. Um, official mapping is a tool that the city hasn't used much in the past decade, but we're starting to utilize. Um, and it really helps us lay out our clear intentions for future streets. Uh, once a plan is adopted, if there are critical connections, like the ones that you see here, um, that will really help the, the input or adopted plan come to fruition. The council has instructed us and, and the Plan Commission has instructed us to begin uh carefully selecting the key streets to officially map. And this is what, this is what you see before you. The Transportation Planning and Policy Board saw this version on February fourteenth of twenty twenty two, recommended approval. Um, Plan Commission recommended, recommended approval of this version of the official mapping amendment as well. Uh, what it does is instead of Roth Street ending here, um, at the, basically the existing old Ostermeier building, Roth Street would dip down and have a continuous east-west movement uh connecting ultimately to where Coolidge intersects with Packers. And then for the north-south critical connection, this would be uh existing Ruskin Street today, veering north, connecting with Huxley, which is an existing neighborhood street. Um, importantly, as shown here, if the railroad connection can be moved from this location southward to this new location, this portion of existing Roth Street, shown in the hash marks, would be vacated um at some point in the future, once this, this street is constructed. And just for reference, the, the east-west um projected daily volume of traffic would be about five thousand cars once development uh takes place and meeting, uh, meeting the uh adopted plan recommendations. Want to zoom in a little bit more on the site and basically want to stress that in our consideration of this alignment, both through the planning process and uh through the surveying and laying out the official mapping amendment, um, we had to consider many, many things. And this is a, you know, really threading the needle literally through this site. Um, you, you may have heard some concern- Let's see, sorry about that. Um, there have been some concerns raised, uh, good concerns about some very high-quality trees in this area here. And as we were working with our colleagues in traffic engineering to lay out this actual alignment, we made sure to um engage with forestry, go out on the site and make sure that adequate distance is maintained between future curves and high-quality oak and hickory trees. Um, there uh were very late concerns raised about another tree stand in this area, much more substantial in area, but much, much lower in quality. Uh, we did go out with Parks Arborists to the site, um, as, and, and then the alder actually went out to the site as well to really take a look and walk this part of the property with the permission of the property owner. Um, based on the assessment from arborists within the Parks Division, the trees in this area, um, most of them would need to be removed if the city ever owned a portion of this property, for instance, for a future park, as is the intent. Um, most of them would need to be immediately removed um due to the safety reasons and, and, and other, they're, they're really low-quality trees in this area. They're really low-quality trees in this area. Some other considerations and concerns arose about potential epigee mounds within the area. And we were able to connect with the State Historical Society and talk through this possibility. While there aren't any documented mounds in this area, there is a raised area right here, shown with a digital elevation model. And if undocumented archaeological sites do exist here, just want to note that they're about 100 feet away from the future right-of-way shown in this original alignment. And so we're certain that these would be avoided. And I want to stress, my colleague Chris Pedikowski is here from City Engineering. And if there are questions about how City Engineering deals with archaeological sites, he can address those this evening. Quickly here, the official mapping, as I'll show in a moment, does go hand-in-hand with the future land use, the rezoning of these properties and what they will become in the future. As you can see here, this official mapped north-south and east-west connection leave a property of about 13.7 acres here in this area that would be immediately rezoned in conjunction with this action to conservancy, from industrial to conservancy. And the reason for that is to really set it up well for use as a future park if and when the city acquires this site for future park use. This smaller two-acre portion here would likely need to come in as a second phase to a future park. It is currently zoned industrial. There's an active use on the site. And the Plan Commission has recommended that the council consider maintaining that industrial zoning for the time being. But we do see this as a long-term future opportunity for acquisition of an additional two acres for a future park. So again, here's the proposed official map amendment that the TPPB saw back in February, along with the accompanying rezonings that go right along with it. The rezonings are really more focus of the Plan Commission, but I just want to stress that they do go hand-in-hand. The alignment of the new streets is exactly aligned with the shape of the new zoning districts. In recent months, we've worked with Alder Boss and others on a substitute alignment that's before you this evening. This alignment that is shown here really is a technically feasible alignment. The future rail crossing is shown in the same location as it is in the other alignment. The future park site that would immediately be rezoned to CN or conservancy is slightly larger, about an acre larger. And I think that's been really one of the main emphasis areas of trying to realign the street. I'll toggle back and forth here just so that you can see the comparison again. But one other feature of the substitute alignment is that it provides a more squared-off development site for a potential housing development that we expect to be coming in soon. So again, here's the original alignment. And this is the substitute that's also before you this evening. Again, you can see that the alignment of the rezonings is exactly aligned with the alignment of these streets. I want to come back to the staff rationale, and this is a staff recommendation really coming from not only the planning vision, but also traffic engineering and engineering as well. We do believe, again, that the substitute is a technically feasible solution to street connectivity through the site, but that it has some really important factors that really lead staff to support the original alignment. And I want to summarize those here clearly, and then I'm happy to take any questions that you may have or send questions to colleagues from other agencies who are here as well, following the public input. The first reason is really that the original alignment entails a modification of the Roth Street rail crossing, which is here today. It's the Roth Street rail crossing today. It could still be called the Roth Street rail crossing in the future. Again, we want to put ourselves in the best position possible to get this future rail crossing. It's not a slam dunk, but we think it's absolutely critical for the multimodal connectivity across this site for hundreds and hundreds of future residents and also for existing residents who may live on the west side of Sherman today. Getting through this site, you know, something that you talked about at length this evening was the importance of walking options to get to bus stops. Can't be a better example of the need for this key connection as a way to get from this area over to Packers Avenue cleanly in order to access additional transit options. Importantly, when folks from planning and engineering met with a DOT, a former DOT consultant, we learned that the importance of this continuous east-west movement, so Roth Street being able to move without stop signs at this four-way intersection would be critical to putting us in the best position possible to get this rail crossing here. And so this, again, is probably one of the main reasons that staff is strongly recommending that the original alignment move forward. Finally, a four-way intersection like this provides a safer, safer multimodal way for both bicyclists and pedestrians to move through intersections. I'll toggle back to the substitute here. If you can imagine being a bicyclist, particularly, you would approach from the east here, moving west. Perhaps you'd turn north, and then you'd almost immediately have to turn east or turn west again in order to move through the site. It's a lot of turning movements and a little less safe than the option that basically is a T-intersection or cross-intersection here. We think it's also, while certainly there's no transit planned for this area today, since there aren't streets here today, we think that this does put us in the best possible position moving forward if there were to be transit routes utilizing these future streets. That could be school buses or metro transit routes. But really, this type of intersection design, again, we think puts the city in the best position for the critical rail crossing relocation. I think that's the number one, and then presents a much safer bicycle and pedestrian environment as well. I'll leave it there for you this evening. But again, I want to stress the importance of achieving this future rail crossing. We think that especially for the housing units that you'll hear a little bit more about this evening, it is absolutely critical. And again, it's been the main reason leading to our inter-agency staff recommendation to stick with the original alignment. Thanks so much for your time. Really appreciate it.
Okay, we do have a number of registrations for public comment. It appears that some of them are still on the call with us. First registrant is Paul Nedler in support, wishing to speak. 136 Kensington, Maple Bluff, Wisconsin.
Yeah, Paul here?
Hi, Paul.
Hello?
Hi, Paul.
Are you good still?
I'm sorry?
Okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. You've got three minutes. You can begin when you're ready.
Okay, ready to go. Thank you for your community service and this opportunity to share public input. I am Paul Nedler, volunteer coordinator for Madison Fund, Friends of Urban Nature. I help organize naturalists who lead 123 diverse, family-friendly nature outings year-round with two almost every weekend in Madison parks and urban natural areas. I care deeply about saving urban nature and equitable access to nearby nature from every school and neighborhood. This past Thursday, I helped lead our annual Fund Parks and Partner Groups co-sponsored Owen Park Pond Day for 260 excited school kids from kindergarten to middle school who walked from three nearby schools. The kids loved exploring the pond and looking at tadpoles. Hartmeyer Natural Area looks almost exactly like the Owen Park mere pond area with quiet streets and a mature tree line that helps create a quiet nature sanctuary. And there are schools nearby eager to use this park. Counting how many people use parks to enjoy nature is not as easy as counting cards for transportation planning, since most people walk. But it is substantial, and it's year-round. Watching nature is like watching a ballgame for many people. It should be easily accessible for families and kids and folks of limited means. Please strongly support easy access to this park with quiet natural area that is safe for people and safe for the wildlife they love. I'm speaking here as Chair of Friends of Hartmeyer Natural Area, representing broadly-voiced public support for saving this urban wetland gem. We also support responsible housing development that minimizes impact on the wetland and surrounding area that is slated to be zoned as a CN Conservation Park. It is part of a county-designated environmental corridor. The proposed street mapping ignores broad community support to save all 30 acres. It does not even meet the intent of the Common Council to save at least 16 acres, because two acres in the south are already developed and non-conforming. It should instead be added using existing open natural area on the east, as in the substitute plan. It also ignores the developers' wishes and the broad public support to minimize new streets and save the old-growth tree line border. In fact, the proposed street mapping would wipe out almost the entire tree line and put the street only two feet from the legal wetland boundary without any environmental corridor recommended setback. This will be a nature park. The old tree line is not just pretty space. Old cottonwoods are almost as valuable as oaks to natural area biodiversity. They look messy, but the birds and wildlife love and use them. The tree line will be a natural area space, not a playground in that part of the park. The proposed street mapping is touted as safer, but it would not be safer because it would route a new traffic shortcut from North Sherman right through the middle of senior and low-income housing and the new Quiet Nature Park, instead of using the existing major streets we have at Aberg and Commercial. Cut-through traffic with no stop signs would not be safer for bikes. We don't need to pave every inch of open space. With more park space, there can be new, separate, safer walk-bike paths. Please make a motion and vote for the substitute street mapping preferred by the developer and the community. Your vote for the substitute mapping will help keep busy traffic away from our new Quiet Conservation Nature Park with safe, walkable, bikeable access for neighborhood families and school kids. It will help minimize a loss of precious open space. It will save and protect the old-growth tree line. Finally, your vote will save a substantial nature park that will address Madison's climate, carbon, and clean water goals, as well as equitable, safe access to nature, public health, and this environmental gem. It's a true win-win for both the city and the community. Thank you for supporting both low-income and senior housing and saving a wonderful, quiet nature park for a growing area population to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Are there any questions for the speaker? Seeing none. Our next registrant is Barbara Nodler, 136 Kensington Drive, Madison, in support, wishing to speak. I don't... Oh, there you go. Hi, Barbara. Hi, Barbara.
Yeah, hi. Can you hear me?
Yeah, you've got three minutes. You can begin when you're ready.
Okay, okay, I'll begin. Yes, I support the official map reservation that was on the agenda, Exhibit A, Version 2, which is an official street map. And this version saves most of the line of the old-growth trees and gives us more natural area, I believe, 15 acres. We were supposed to have, we were told, promised 16 acres from the city council meeting. And so, you know, right now, we're trying to claw back. They have us down to like 14. And, you know, this is a very important area for the neighborhood and for the wildlife. And, you know, you have plenty of roads all over the place. So I support Version 2. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara. Are there any questions for the speaker? Seeing none. Our next registrant is Jennifer Arglander in support, wishing to speak.
I'm going to see, I don't know.
I'm going to go off.
Chair, there is no person attendance by that name.
Thank you. Next registrant is Chris Elholm in support, wishing to speak.
Chair, there is no person attendance by that name.
Okay. Our next registrant is Kevin McDonald in support, wishing to speak, 401 Wiltshire Boulevard, Santa Monica, California, representing Lincoln Avenue Capital.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You've got three minutes.
Good evening, and thanks for everyone taking time late this evening. My name's Kevin McDonald. I'm a locally-based regional development partner with Lincoln Avenue Capital. Excited to be here and very excited for the potential to play a role in some of the redevelopment efforts surrounding the former Oscar Meyer site. Lincoln Avenue Capital is a national, mission-driven, affordable housing company with over 20,000 units across the country. I'm grateful to be here representing our first-class team of locally-based design experts that includes JLA Architects, urban assets, and our civil engineers at JST. Since the fall of 2021, we've engaged with our design team and city staff to understand the planned street locations while reviewing the potential for development in the surrounding Oscar Meyer area. We appreciate the many hours of planning that have been put forth and look forward to continuing to work with city staff as the street locations are finalized. It's also important to note that at the end of 2021, we submitted two separate workforce housing applications to WEDA in order to preserve the area's expiring Qualified Census Track, which will make affordable housing development on the site feasible. In preserving the Qualified Census Track, it helped to ensure our development site is most likely the only remaining site that will be able to develop affordable housing utilizing the Qualified Census Track treatment, which has now provided a deadline for us to receive our development approvals. Given the extended Qualified Census Track, it means that if our... It means that if our development is not able to move forward in a timely fashion, that affordable workforce housing and senior housing as proposed will likely not be possible for the surrounding Oscar Meyer area Census Track. Since receiving our Qualified Census Track approvals, we were made aware of concerns from some of the neighborhood groups. And during the spring of 2022, began working with many of the different interested parties to see if there was a compromise that could be reached to satisfy some of the environmental, conservation, archaeological, and development concerns that were standing in the way of the proposed street network from being approved. The solution that our design team and the neighborhood group arrived at provides an additional conservation area of one acre with a total conservation and park area of over 15 acres, with future increases possible. Preserves the mature oak and hickory tree stands, provides a safe neighborhood-scale street system, a new railroad crossing in the same location as the previous network, avoids an existing building to the east of Ruskin, maximizes the protection of the highest-quality natural resources, protects the potential archaeological site with an additional buffer as compared to the previously approved network, and provides for a half-acre less of impervious surface that will improve the site's stormwater management, while allowing for around 550 affordable workforce housing units. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, Kevin. Are there any questions for the speaker? Margaret, go ahead, please.
Yeah, just very quickly, Mr. McDonald, thanks for hanging in with us this evening. I just want to make sure I'm clear. Your group is supporting the substitute?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, yeah, option two, map two, that was on the staff memo.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Okay. Our next registrant is Jamie Calley, 3463 Blake Street, Denver, in support, wishing to speak, representing JLA Architects.
Good evening, everybody. I hope you can hear me. Are you able to bring up our exhibit? Or do I need to speak without that? Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. I don't know if we are able, are we able to do that?
That's the attachment 16, the JLA document there? If not, I can speak without it, I guess.
Why don't you begin? And we'll see if we can get that pulled up.
So Jamie Calley, I'm with JLA Architects. Although it says Denver, we're based out of Madison, and I'm here with you from Denver tonight. If you go to the next slide, we've been asked to look at how to develop these parcels for both the senior housing and the family housing. And we have two, we use the term preferred, which is the substitute version, and a proposed, which is the original version. So this is a look at the substitute version, senior apartment... Senior apartment apartments would be north of the Packers Roth Connector, and family housing would be south of that. The goal of the developer is to provide two hundred and fifty units for senior housing as one- and two-bedrooms, along with two hundred and fifty, or three hundred parking spaces. The family apartments would be approximately three hundred units with five hundred parking spaces, and they would be one, two, three, and four-bedroom units. Both buildings are approximately six stories with five-story wings facing towards the park and three levels of parking. And we'd have an occupied deck over the parking garage. If you go to the next diagram, it just gives you a quick view of what would possible massing and scale those buildings would look like. And these are diagrams. They're not meant to be architecture. And so if you go to the next slide, this is the original street layout proposed by the city. And we took a look at what we could develop in each site. You end up having a little triangle site that's really undevelopable for what the client wants to do. You have a senior housing site, which is much smaller. This housing site is two acres, as opposed to the substitute version, which is almost three acres. The family housing parcel is equivalent in size in both schemes. The challenge here is that we are only able to provide about one hundred and ninety-five units for senior housing. And if the abandoned area for Roth Street is not done in time with the development, we'd probably lose another twenty units. So we're basically between sixteen eight units short of the two hundred and fifty unit goal set by the development team. Basically, the same idea, six-story building, five-story wings presented towards the park. The park in this case, as was mentioned earlier, is about an acre shorter, smaller, rather. Almost fourteen acres versus almost fifteen acres. And basically, equivalent idea of how we'd approach this. And again, just these are diagrammatic. If you go to the next slide, it gives you an idea of the potential scale and size of the buildings as they sit on the site. So the real challenge and difference between us is that we have one parcel for the senior housing that is significantly smaller in the original scheme as opposed to the substitute scheme. So that's why we are proposing looking at the substitute street layout. Then I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Jamie. Are there any questions for the speaker? All right, seeing none. Our next registrant is Brenda Klecker, 700 C-3 Ruskin Street, Madison, in opposition, in opposition, not wishing to speak, but available to answer questions. Our next register, let's see. I don't see her, or that person on the call any longer. Our next registrant is Mark Ott, 800 West Broadway, Menona, in support, not wishing to speak, but available to answer questions, representing Lincoln Avenue Capital, capital, excuse me. Are there any questions? All right, seeing none. Questions for staff? Alder Foster, go ahead, please.
Yeah, just one question. I think I heard Chris Pedakowski's here from Engineering, the railroad crossing. I mean, that seems to be really a critical point for me. So just any more information about the potential challenges if we went with the substitute and impacting our ability to get a new railroad crossing?
Hi, Chris Pedakowski here with City Engineering. Yeah, I think Heather kind of summed it up pretty, pretty well. When we discussed with our, our normal consultant that we use on these types of projects, he felt more comfortable with the, with the original version, that we would be in a better position. By no means does that mean we would be, you know, either one would be for sure. But due to the, you know, the realigning the existing crossing and then having that geometry that kind of created more of a smooth traffic flow and had less chance of backing up across the rail, he felt that that was, that put us in a stronger position. And, and, and I, I want to emphasize it. The petition process is, is challenging and, you know, will be, will be hard for both of them. But he did think that we were in a better position with the staff option originally.
That makes sense. So what would the timing be then? And this is for map preservation. We've got a developer that has interest in a potential development. What's the timing of some of these different things? And how do we, when would, when we know if that can happen? And including the comment that was made about the potential vacation then, if we were able to secure the crossing? So kind of how, what are the different ways that might play out?
That's a good question. So, so certainly, the, you know, the, the, the development could, could create the, the right-of-way's on the west side of the tracks. There is still, I believe, some... Dan might actually have more of the details, but I think there's some obstacles on the east end that we'd have to clear before that street could be built on the, over to Packers. So all that would take time. And, and, and the petition process itself can take six months often, maybe even longer, if there's some contention behind it. So, and, and we would have to be in a, you know, have to have budget to, to, to build that stuff, to build the infrastructure for the crossing and the, and the street where it wasn't being, you know, developed by a developer agreement. So there's a lot of, lot of parts in there that, that takes some time. I'm not, I don't know if I have the exact layout figured out at the moment.
So would it be most likely then, if the developer wanted to proceed with a proposal and it went through the, the processes and ultimately got approved, that they would build out the, essentially, the streets on the west side of the tracks and kind of line it up for a future crossing then?
Yeah, I think you'd, you'd, you'd line it up. And then, you know, we as a city would have to decide whether or not we wanted to, what wins the right time to petition for the crossings? And then, and then go ahead and, and build that crossing. You know, we want to, I think we'd want to be in a, a place where, you know, we, we showed that the crossing was necessary. So certainly, if we can't build it on the east side, we can't really say, you know, it's necessary right now. So I, I guess I, I think I'd have to think about that a little bit. And maybe...
Essentially, we'd want to be in the, have the strongest application when we, when, when we do that. And so I guess that's, that's the thrust of the staff recommendation at this point is, let's do that on the west side. Still some work to do on the east side before we really request it. But if we, if we went with the substitute here, we're maybe not putting our best foot forward for that future request, is what I'm understanding.
That was, that was our initial thought, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, before we continue, I missed some, an updated registrant list for public comments. So we do have a few more. Let's see here. I have Melissa Huggins, 807 East Johnson Street, Madison, in support, not wishing to speak, but available to answer questions, representing Lincoln Avenue Capital. Matt Haas in support, not wishing to speak, but available to answer questions, also Lincoln Avenue Capital. Rebecca Leidner in support, not wishing to speak. That's 1915 Spon Avenue, Madison. Holden Littlewood in support, not wishing to speak. 6205 Mineral Point Road. Don Lindsay in support, not wishing to speak. 1716 Northfield, Madison. Marcia Cannon in support, not wishing to speak. Five Cherokee Circle, Madison. Amanda Worheim, support, not wishing to speak. 129 Lakewood Gardens. Denise Miller, 1610 Sunfield Street, Madison, support, not wishing to speak. And then I also have Alder Abbas in support, wishing to speak. So Alder Abbas, if you're still with us.
Yep. I'm still here.
Chair, just a point of order, and I think Alder Abbas knows this, and this is a good thing. He can participate way longer than this, and he could participate in everything. So he's welcome to speak now or when the motion is. But I just want to make sure he knows that, you know, that, that he's obviously just a regular, for all, non-voting.
Right, I simply read it because as it was on the registry most, and I want to make sure it was, I comprehensively covered it. I believe that's all of our typical registrants for public comment. Obviously, Alder Abbas, you're welcome to participate in discussion at any point. So I see your hand, and why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, thank you so much. I appreciate that. Whisper, and I hope you guys can hear, kids are sleeping. So let me know if you cannot hear me. So thanks, that's great. So first of all, I will say thank you very much to Director Stoudt. I know this whole Oscar Mayer process is a very lengthy process, and there is a lot of strong emotions from the neighbors and area residents about wetland, and there's a long history. So I really appreciate you collaborating with the neighbors, with me, and working on creating an option to present in front of transportation planning board. So I appreciate you and your department for working really hard in a such a short timeline. And I know how much staff spend time, so truly appreciate that. Second, I will say, so here, you know, I would, I would not take a lot of, you know, committee time. This particular substitute is win-win for everyone. It's win for developer, it's win for community, it's win for City of Madison. And here is the reason why. We heard from the staff, they feel they want to get in the best position, but at the same time, they also alluded, there is no guarantee that they will get the railway road crossing. We all know, and especially you guys sit on this commission, and my experience also working with railway road on Oscar Mayer Special Area Plan, talk to various people who work for railroad. Getting railroad to approve a new crossing is notoriously very hard. And there is no guarantee at all, like, which way it will go. And, and with that, I think so these two alternatives come down to really a basic question in front of you. And that basic question is, do we want to vote on the basis of a hope that we will get our railway road crossing if we put our best foot forward? Or do we want to vote to really make sure we get more affordable housing, which is much needed in City of Madison? I do remember, not to put one commissioner on the spot, I do remember Bart Azar, Commissioner, he participated in Oscar Mayer Special Area Plan, and I do remember your comments about housing density for affordable housing, as well as managing the, you know, providing enough open space. I think so this proposal provide both. It will be, I think so, it will give, if we decide to go with the staff recommendation, we're going to lose around sixty to eighty affordable housing units. Still, there is no guarantee railway road, how they're gonna react. I think so this particular one give us all the opportunities, still give us opportunity to have multi-model connection, give us opportunity to have more density in affordable housing, which is much needed in City of Madison. And then it also give us fifteen acreage land, regardless, instead of thirteen point nine, which I would also say, Yihara Watershed Study is published, and I read the whole thing, and one of the thing really was mentioned, the historic, one of the reason of historic flooding is we do not have wetland ecological system because we built on wetlands around Ismies. And this is a huge opportunity for us here to not to repeat the same mistake. And given here, these future residents, like, if there is over five hundred and fifty unit development, then we have very well use this fifteen-acre land. So I really hope official mapping, the, the commission will approve the substitute, which is a good thing for the city, as well as a good thing for the local resident environment, as well as affordable housing. With that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Alder Abbas. Are there any further questions from staff, or for staff? Seeing none, Alder Furman, go ahead, please.
I'd like to make a motion, if that's in order.
It is, thank you.
I'd like to move a recommendation of Version One, the staff version. I'm happy to talk about it.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second?
Second, Alder Foster, thank you. Go ahead, Alder Furman.
Thank you, Chair. I, I, this is obviously not easy. I think our focus here is to be focused on, on the transportation aspect of this plan. And I do think that the Version One does, does a better job. I think it's up for the Plan Commission to look more at the housing component. I'm not absolutely convinced that those, that, that we're definitely going to be precluding a certain amount of units with, with the Version One. But I do think from a transportation perspective, Version One is, is in the best interest. So that's why I moved it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Furman. Additional discussion? Alder Foster, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I would echo that mostly. I mean, we, we heard Alder Abbas say that, you know, the challenges of getting the railroad connections, and of course, they're not guaranteed. But I, that's really the primary reason why I think we should go with the original, is to maximize our opportunity to get that crossing. I think it's going to be a very difficult, broad area to develop if we're not able to secure that, that crossing long-term. So I really think we need to prioritize that as we map these streets out right now.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Alder Abbas, go ahead, please.
Thank you very much. I think so it's very relevant here, because this official mapping is going to determine how they're going to construct the building. This is not Plan Commission discussion. This is your discussion to decide where you're going to draw the road. That's going to determine how much land they have to construct. Also, they are tight, developer is very tight on the timeline. If they do not have enough space, the project might get killed too. So not only this eighty unit, might be the whole project goes into down south. So, so I'm really thinking through this, not only from Plan Commission standpoint, but also from transportation, to really see how this boundary is going to give most land, the most land for them to build, which is much, much needed in NCD. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Abbas. Margaret, go ahead, please.
Yes, we've discussed with this committee many times, there's inextricable link between housing density and transportation. So the ability of these folks to move through this process and get the permits to put up affordable housing is in our interest. It's also in our interest to do whatever we possibly can to prevent future flooding of our roadways and other infrastructure. So I'm going to vote against this and vote in favor of the substitute if I, if we have the opportunity to do so.
Thank you, Margaret. Bart Azar, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I, I think, I think here we have an opportunity where we can, you know, combine, you know, transportation with affordable housing. And, you know, again, it's not, I'm not a planner, I'm not a, you know, transit engineer, but I, I do, I do work with the community. And, and, you know, many, many of the community members that I work with do suffer with, you know, affordable housing. And, you know, if, I, I encourage, you know, for, for us to, to, to think about, you know, are we, are we building streets for people? Or are we building, you know, streets for communities who might be far away from, from, from the? you know, streets for communities who might be far away from, from them, you know? Anyway, so I'm going to vote in favor of the substitute. I think that's a more welcoming, you know, welcoming to the community solution and yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bartezar. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, Alder Furman, would you mind restating your motion, just so it's very clear what, what's being voted on?
Sure, move adoption of version one.
Thank you. All right. On the motion to recommend adoption of version one, I believe there is a difference of opinions, so we'll do a roll call vote. An a vote is in favor of adoption of version one, and no vote is, a vote against. If the court will please call a roll.
Bartezar, Dayan Satana?
No.
Barbara Harrington McKinney? Barbara Harrington McKinney? Carly McAndrews?
Aye, right, is for one? Yeah, aye.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Christopher McAhill?
Aye.
Grant Foster?
Aye.
Margaret Bergamini?
No.
Randy Udo?
Aye.
Keith Furman?
Aye.
So it appears that Alder Harrington McKinney is not on the call anymore, so Bodri, if you are here with us, you may also vote in this case. I don't see Bodri. Okay, that's five ayes, two noes, the ayes have it. All right, thank you to staff and all the registrants who stuck with us. I know this is a longer meeting than, than you're perhaps used to. Okay, we have two items left. Legislature 7181878, excuse me, 71878, election of officers, so that is for the Transportation Policy and Planning Board, office of chair and vice chair. Currently, the chair is held by myself, and the vice chair position is held by Alder Foster. Alder Furman?
I'd like to make a nomination for a chair. I'd like to nominate Tom Wilson.
Thank you, that nomination is well received, Randy.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any further nominations for chair? Seeing none, all those in favor of maintaining Tom Wilson as chair of the Transportation Policy and Planning Board, please unmute yourselves and say hi.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Any abstentions? Triple unanimous, flag registered, no vote or an abstention, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, thank you. Election of vice chair? Alder Furman?
I'd like to nominate Alder Foster for vice chair.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Randy. Any discussion? Any further nominations for vice chair? All those in favor of voting Alder Foster as vice chair of Transportation Policy and Planning Board, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Opposed, no? Any abstentions? Seeing none, if you'd like to register an abstention or a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, the way it is unanimous, thank you. Last item we have for the evening then is legislature 71879, appointment of a representative to the Joint Campus Area Committee. This one, I don't think we necessarily need to take care of this evening, we could refer it. Something we can talk about a little bit. Alder Foster or Tom, when you want to begin?
Yeah, I'm asking if perhaps this could be tabled. We have some expiring terms for members of the TPBB that could influence this nomination. And just in the, in all the network redesign and BRT activity, we haven't, I have to probably address some of the expiring terms, and then we will have a fuller understanding of who would be candidates for this appointment to the GCAC.
You, Tom, Alder Foster, go ahead.
Moving for all this items, or I guess to our next meeting?
Thank you, there's a motion, is there a second? Alder Furman, thank you. Any discussion? All is in favor of referring this to our next meeting, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Opposed, no? Triple unanimous, if you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, a little bit on is unanimous, thank you.
Chair, move adjournment, please.
Thank you. Second, all right, all those in favor of joining, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 All is no, triple unanimous, have a good night, everyone, Roger.